I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intuitively, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, welcome to the March 2nd Harbor Committee meeting. We have in attendance Mary Ann, Eddie, Hillary Thayer, and other members on the way, I guess. We have Francio and Doris Alvarez. And for Nelson Pope, we have Brandt.
Reiner.
Reiner.
Oh, sorry, yes, Brad Reiner, thank you.
My apologies. So, I think what we would like to...
The minutes.
Yeah, we have to look at the minutes, let's start with that. We need John here for this. So bear with us while we look at the minutes and then we will jump into the next stage. I see a typo in that. I think that's fine, Mary Ann, just easy.
Yeah, no, just typo and a word change, but I think it's fine the way it is.
Okay.
So I make a motion to accept the minutes from January 5th, as is.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Alright, so these guys.
Did John pick up?
I haven't heard from John, is he available electronically?
No, no, he's coming, he was on the road.
Can we call and find out where he is, because...
Well, what we can do, before we go into decisions, can we open to the public to have Kathy give her presentation, what she wants to do?
Yeah, that would be fine, okay, yeah, or you can have, sometimes people make comments from the floor, right, isn't this now?
Right, so, we're gonna open this part up to the public. Is anybody in the audience that would like to speak, please do so, about anything? Okay. Doris, can you activate Kathy Heisman's?
Yes, Kathy?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, so, I can, I'm able to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, the Harvard Committee has been referred three local laws for items that are gonna be heard on March 14th by the Board of Trustees. The first one is the amendment to the waterfront overlay district. And this involves two things, one is the refinement of the definition of waterfront lot. And the other has to do with removing the provision that would allow the village board to allow a maximum height to be increased from 25 feet to 35 feet for certain projects within the VB district. That by special exception, and in, the idea was that that would be a bonus height to allow for a public access across private property to the waterfront. So this, that would apply to only the VB properties in the, in the waterfront overlay and that are defined as waterfront properties. So, I will share my screen. Hopefully, I'm giving you the correct screen, can you see?
Yes.
Waterfront overlay district zoning map?
Yes.
This is...
So this is what, this is the actual boundary of the waterfront overlay district in blue here. And the lots that are zoned, the underlying zoning is village business, are these two lots on Long Island Avenue or West Water Street? And this, the property that's immediately adjacent to Long Wharf. So, right now, the waterfront, waterfront lot is defined as a lot that abuts a water body, or a lot that abuts a park, that abuts a water body, as set forth in the diagram below. And the proposal is to add a little bit more clarity, because there are some situations which were intended to be included. Lots that have a easement in front of them, or could be accessed by a flag lot. So, the proposal is to change it to include all scenarios that were intended under the original waterfront overlay district code. So that's the first thing. The second one is to remove that provision that would allow a 35 hun, a 35-foot maximum height for a project that involves a gross floor area of 3,500 square feet by special permit. And this is how it reads now. And I will, my intent is to send you a report to, to look at, that explains all this, and that, you know, gives you some more of the background that you can discuss. And I will also send you a coastal assessment form. So, the, the idea is to just remove that provision, so that way, there won't be a special exception allowance to allow the 35-foot height.
Kathy, before, that just applied to buildings 35 feet, or 3,500 or greater?
Correct, it was a part of a, no idea if there was a larger development, that you might want to have some flexibility
Right.
in that design, and to create, you know, and actually, if you're going to do that, then you would be required to provide a public easement across your property.
So now, there's no case where there'll be structures higher than 25 feet?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, that, that is, in a nutshell, what that one is about. So of course, one of the provisions of the LWRP is to provide public access to the waterfront. So that, that's, you know, something for this board to discuss. Whether the height, getting rid of that height revision outweighs or, you know, if there's, is there no balance there? So, I, I don't know if you want to, you know, weigh in on this this evening, or if you want to get more information, or to digest it a little bit further.
I ask a question, so, the, the provision was there, the exchange was height for a walkway. So by removing this, by removing specifically, but under, will the exception remain for other situations or not? Just, we're literally just removing this exception for the walkway, which will remove the exception, or exemptions altogether, for height?
Yeah, yes.
For height, for some of the variants.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to get the height, the, and, yeah, and it was specifically tied to that public access, correct? Um, going back, you know, as, as I mentioned, it only applies to those three lots. And actually, the mayor was reminding me today, that there, there is an active application to obtain the lot at Two West Water Street through CPF funds. And that will in itself, open up the visual, you know, the view shed to the waterway, from, actually from Village Hall even, you'll be able to see the waterway.
That's Fort Apache.
Yeah, Fort Apache.
And what...
Effectively known as, yes.
What, what do we know about the status of that?
I don't have any information about that.
It's just been rumored, so...
No, I think, I think there's an, there's an active, you know, review of it, is my understanding.
Great.
Do you know what the price is?
No, no information.
And you know what?
One of the things, the balancing test here is, what I was thinking about, is that you're talking about the two properties that are facing West Water Street, that you might get a 35-foot high building, and get a 10-foot wide pedestrian access, you know, through, through a special exception approval of the trustees. Where, to Steinbeck Park, where you already have access to Steinbeck Park. And the other property is the Pat Malloy property, on the corner of Long Wharf and Bay Street. And again, that's another one where, you, you know, you have significant access to the waterway via Long Wharf, is a beautiful boardwalk that surrounds it now. So, something to think about.
I'm sorry, so, the Malloy property, right there at the corner of Long Wharf and Bay, and what was the other one, the second one?
Uh, there's, there's the three properties, there's, uh, what was referred to as Fort Apache, and then 711 property is also zoned.
Right. Well, we can talk about with the full board, but I think it's probably a good trade-off.
Well, what, what Kathy and I had discussed earlier was the possibility that we can look at this as a committee, maybe in a work session, or at some other time, I don't think, A, we don't have enough people here to really offer a full-throated response, and I don't think that we've given it enough time to respond. My understanding is that the trustees are going to have this as a public discussion in their next, in their next meeting.
Yes, March 14th.
Yeah, I know that planning has some strong opinions about this, I don't know if you've spoken to John Shaka? Did?
Yeah, they have not, they have not rendered a recommendation yet.
That's right, so, it, it's my opinion that we should, as a committee, spend a little time looking at the lots, the documents, etc., before we put forth a position, if we do.
Before the 14th?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to do it before then, yeah, and I don't think it's rocket science to do that.
Well, I think we have to notice any work session.
Yeah, definitely.
And we have only 10 days, so today's the second, so we would have to notice it tomorrow.
Oh, I see, in terms of the calendar, okay.
If you wanted to do it before the 14th.
There's no 10-day requirement for this, it sounds like a public hearing.
Okay.
You can have a meeting. Frankly, there is no firm fast notice requirement, but typically, you would do at least 48 hours.
Okay.
So, you've got some time, if you wanted to schedule something before the 14th. And Kathy, you... And properly notice it. And properly notice, yeah, and Kathy, do you want to attend that meeting?
I'm sure, if I'm available, I will be happy to attend.
Okay, so what we will do, within 24 hours if possible, is put together a date that we can all meet. So we'll put all our names together and see if we can get a...
Kathy, is there a date on that waterfront map that you're looking at, is that one online?
This is the, this is the map that was adopted, yes.
But it's one online.
I will send this to you, though, this little compilation that I put together, I'll just email that to you, okay?
Thank you.
And then I'm working on, I'm also working on a, on a more formal memo, that would have the place for your signature, if you, if you agree that it is consistent or not inconsistent with LWRP. Uh, so that way, it'll make it easy for you when you do meet.
Excellent.
Okay.
Do you want me to talk about the other one?
Just briefly, yeah, the other two.
Okay, so, the other two, that's right. So, the other, the other code amendment has to do with having clearing limits. And have, I have a copy of it, but I don't have anything else. But I think that the most interesting part of it has to do with the actual... Hold on, I'll bring it up. Try to bring it up. So, the, the most important thing about this is that the, this would establish lot clearing limits in order to maintain the vegetated, the nature of the village. And there are percent clearing limits that have been proposed by this local law. So, up to 10,000 square foot lot, the maximum lot clearing would be 100%, just because there's so much limitations on a smaller lot. But as the lots get bigger, the maximum lot clearing goes down. So 75% clearing limit on a 10,000 to 15,000 square foot lot, 1501 to 20,000 square foot lot, 65%, and then over 20,000 square foot lot, you can clear 60%. So, I don't have a lot more to say about this, except that from the perspective of the Harbor Committee, and, you know, establishing clearing limits would be a good thing from the perspective of maintaining vegetation. And so, as far as consistency with the LWRP, it appears that this is consistent, whether or not, you know, that you agree with the clearing limits as they are written here, or not. So that's really all I have for that one. We have, we have yet to fill out the coastal assessment form for this as well.
That's right. And the rental registry is?
Is a, is really not a, is really not something, it's an administrative law, it's for actually making sure that properties that are rented out are on registered with the village, so it's more of a safety, um, safety provisions.
Yeah. Okay, so you'll send us a follow-up on...
Yes, on both of these, on the clearing and on the waterfront overlay.
Okay, and then we will work diligently to put together a work session at a time that is minimal to everybody, if possible.
Good, okay, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
All the input, thanks. Bye, goodnight.
Okay. So I guess the next item are decisions.
You don't have a quorum for this, maybe you should go to 18 Soundview.
Yeah, I can hear from John, so...
So we, we have three people, we can talk about Soundview, right?
Well, why can't we talk about these right now?
Well, you can, but I can't vote on it, and neither can Hillary, because she wasn't here last month.
Okay, so that's, you get that, Fred?
If you can vote, if you weren't here, but you had to, you would have to make yourself familiar with the file.
Right. And that's, they need to do their homework, so that's fine, so, as long as that's in the record, so that...
Well, maybe John will show up, but I didn't anticipate that there wasn't, you know, gonna be a quorum.
Yeah, no, fair enough, fair enough, I appreciate it, so, if we jump forward...
There was at least one, maybe more of, where we had permits that are ready for tonight, but the hearings were still left open?
Yes, yes, that's continued public hearing. 18 Soundview Drive, and we have, well, 22 Rock Point, we're requesting a...
Right, I thought there were others.
It also included midnight pizza, they didn't close the hearing, because it worked, they only had three members, so they, in case maybe the members that were not there, if they had any questions, then we were still here to answer those questions. So we could go through the details, if you guys want to, keep up the speed on it, so that we can then close the public hearing, and I believe that Nelson Pope will prepare a draft permit that you can then discuss, so that was kind of where we had left it, just so that...
And what's his property?
This was 59 Glover.
Oh. Because it's on here, is discussing a permit, I thought.
Right.
Oh.
But I don't think we did not close the hearings formally on that, right?
I thought that I...
And, and on, yeah, Tiffany, on yours, did we close your hearings either, or we leave them open?
We might have closed the hearings, but we left them open for me to submit surveys, which were submitted, and we just had...
It was just left open for that purpose, okay.
For that small purpose.
Alright, I just wanna make sure, if we need to close something tonight, we close it.
We can do that much, I mean, I would just ask, this is a bulkhead replacement for a carch marina, so sure, we can get it moving the fastest, the better. I don't know if you're gonna have a meeting in a few days, if we could, sure, I'm sure Michael would appreciate this too, if we could table those to that next meeting.
If, if we don't have a quorum to vote on these permits tonight, you could, you can definitely put them on the, the agenda for the, the special meeting you're holding also.
Even without a 10-day notice?
The, the 10-day notice is only for the hearing, not for a public meeting, so once the hearings are closed, I mean, you could, you can, you can need to, to do the permits.
You're the lawyer, sounds good.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you're comfortable with that, I mean, if we don't have a quorum, I mean, we have three permits tonight, the, the two marinas and midnight pizza. So, if we don't have three people to vote on those, we could do them on the date.
Let's see what happens, John Parker may show up, we... We don't know, we have Dr. Goldler speaking at 6, so...
I mean, the applicants and their representatives are here, if you're comfortable with that, we could just say we're gonna do it at that meeting.
Right, if you've already agreed to have the meeting, I'm happy to, to come to the next one as well, and deal with it at that point, um, which is, I want to...
We can, we can table the three decisions, okay, we should close 59 Glover. Table the, the other ones and put them on the agenda for whatever the, the special meeting, you agree to have the special meeting.
I appreciate that, thanks.
Although, I don't know why you don't wanna spend some time with...
I just wanna let you know, I have Lily Fell on, on...
She can't vote remotely, correct?
Right.
She's on vacation, she can't.
She's working to the criteria.
Just wanna let you know, she's raising a hand, so she's...
But Fred, what did you just say, she can't vote remotely, right?
Yeah, I mean, being away on vacation is not one of the criteria where you can...
Call in?
Yeah.
All right, well, sorry, guys, I'm here, but watching from remote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, if, if you wanted me to answer any questions, or we're, we're talking about the...
We should open up 59 Glover.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, so... So, no, let's resume with 59 Glover Street. Have you been by that side?
I haven't, I didn't think this was gonna happen tonight. It's listed under decisions.
Yeah.
So, I was like, okay, I'm off duty.
Well, we have to close the hearing, I mean, but, you know, so, I don't know whether there's anything else, the opposite of 10%.
Yeah, we, we do have, we have, I think we could walk through some of this stuff, just so you're, you're more...
We're not gonna decide it tonight.
Right, of course.
Okay.
Okay, I, I just, I'm, I'm offering, I mean, or, or, I guess you guys can close if we can...
Well, it's in the record, right?
Right, we already own the record, yeah, and, and we made a presentation, which is available on YouTube now.
Right, I think the question is, how much, the information's in the record, how much detail, do you want a presentation on that information or not?
I don't need it, I don't know if you need it.
I guess one question I have, it could help me decide that, it says the demolition and reconstruction. Are you reconstructing on the same footprint, or are you changing the footprint?
We're changing the footprint, but we're, are, just a quick, I'm like, she has a presentation, so...
Thank you.
We are changing the footprint by moving everything back to a conforming setback.
Excellent.
So, except, except for the pool house slash boathouse, which is staying there, however, the septic system, which is probably, I think it's less than 50 feet from wetlands, we are taking that out, and propose, it's going to link up to the the septic system for the house, and the new septic system advised.
Okay, so there's no variances involved?
Did you... Mike, did you, remember I asked you last meeting, did you find out the vintage of the existing house?
I did not, I followed this. I think, I don't know, with CEO?
Yeah, well, it appears that the house was built sometime in the 70s, and the existing house that we have today is a result of additions, so asbestos abatement is probably in this group.
The what?
Asbestos abatement.
Yeah, that's fine.
Daniel, I get it.
Thank you.
Well, that seems pretty clean.
Yeah.
What are your concerns?
I guess, I, I'm just gonna apply on something, in the future, we're gonna try to do a constructed deconstruction, rather than a demolition of projects. The building inspector said that there were four demolitions last year. And it's of concern in a lot of towns, and I'm not saying that this has been happened for you, but if we're all concerned about the environment, if we can deconstruct a structure, we can reallocate some of that stuff to, and it usually costs money to do that, but it's offset by pay, you can give it to Habitat for Humanity, for instance.
Oh, so deconstruction, as in taking all the materials you can?
Yeah, and I just asked, since you're in the business, read about it. Because it's a substantial structure there, and if we can repurpose that in any way, it helps us in, what's the community, green community program that you're working on?
Climate Smart Communities?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is...
I'm not taking this stuff.
This is Point Start, nobody has to take it, it's like a leads thing, right, okay, enough said.
So, it's good.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll keep it in mind for future, I think that for this one, it may actually be difficult, just because of how small the entrance to the property is, but getting stuff off of the property, maybe, I know, we have a construction management plan that follows that stuff, but keep that in mind for future, thankful.
And is there the required buffers on all the waterfront?
Yes, yeah, so, we have, so you see the blue line there, Karen?
Blue, I don't see any blue, I see pale green. Oh, yes, thank you.
So, that is the 50-foot abatement setback, because we are proposing to keep the boathouse, we've extended the buffer for that equivalent area. And you see, the, the numbers there are existing trees that are remaining, and we're planting roughly 4,600 square feet of new vegetation, where there's lawn there now.
Okay.
The last time you presented, I thought it was a pretty comprehensive and conscientious project. So if you can recycle anything, that would be great.
Sure, yeah, so we, so there's an existing house that goes over the structural setback of 75 feet from wetlands, and we are demolishing the existing house, whatever word you want to use, and building a new house landlord of the structural setback, the swimming pool, I believe, is maintaining the, the current setback, which is still compliant. And the, the other project benefits are adding drainage, we're, I don't believe it's there right now, adding an IA ODT S, where there is non... Adding an IA OWTS where there is none, um the existing septic system for the boathouse is located around where that opposed four foot axis, if you can see the arrow there, just to the south uh east of the boathouse there, and we're removing that, and that's gonna be piped in. And uh, uh in general, the project is more compliant uh with the regulations and I think it's a better, uh we'll leave the site in better condition than it may be left.
And I see the one, um the wetland delineation, which is running up the, um I don't know which edge that is, but it's on western edge, um and that's the only um wetland, I mean, I'm not seeing anything else, but that's, that's it, right?
Yeah, and, and uh Chip confirmed that.
I think it's a good project, right? I think it's hard to project.
I would feel comfortable voting on this.
You would?
Yeah. I mean, there, you're, there's no ifs, ands, and buts, you meet all the requirements, right? I said, there's no if, ands, or buts, it's all within the scope of the law, so.
Mike, what's your next, do you have to go to ERB for this?
Uh it wouldn't need to go, yeah.
And do you anticipate any issues there in terms of?
Uh no, they, we, we went to a, well, the architect went to a preliminary, like, like, uh just as a discussion item, and they were in favor of it, so they, they couldn't technically vote on it and tell us that, that it is approved, however, they didn't have any issues and they were in favor of it, so.
Are you required, as, as the village opined about whether you need a separate demolition permit?
Uh I do not believe so.
You've, you've indicated that in your permit, that you are demolishing the existing structure.
A separate demolition, like, like to demolish the house and then build a new?
Yeah.
Uh I'm not sure what I'm meaning with Chris Talbot, I will ask him what the correct procedures for that is. I know that, like, in the town of Southampton, when you go to have a whole house demo, you have to do a demolition permit separately from a building permit.
Right.
As opposed to when you do like a renovation, or if you're demolishing just part of the house, you can move that into.
Well, there's, that's right, there are different definitions in different villages, or what are you doing to the foundation and basement of this?
Everything is being taken up.
Okay, so that's a complete demolition.
Complete demolition.
So, yeah, that would be interesting to hear uh what Chris Talbot says. It, it's very important that it's put on a permit that it's a demolition, not a renovation.
Right.
Right, so that we know um what's going on.
That when you come back two years from now, when everything is, is built, that you actually see, yes, the house was down, and it, it helps to describe exactly what, what happened.
Thank you.
I understand.
Yeah. Do you have questions?
No, I mean, basement, did, did you say basement's going?
Well, everything's going, so.
Everything's leaving, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it is in, it's in a flood zone, so there is nothing.
There's nothing.
What is, what is there now, there?
I'm not sure, there may be a crawl space.
I see, okay.
Uh but um, uh I know that it's gonna be FEMA compliant act this, and the um uh we didn't uh uh submit a construction management plan uh that would go through more of the data, and that's in the file, and that will be something that we submitted to, to build department too, to make sure of, of exactly what we are doing with the site afterwards.
And that's what you're building?
No, this is existing.
Really?
Yeah, it's a pretty sweet house, to be FEMA compliant, what, what elevation are you raising to first floor, or are you?
It's uh elevating up to elevation nine.
And what is it now?
The existing grade is at six, it looks like, first floor, it's at nine, but I think that because there's no flood vents, and if there is a crawl space, uh that, that doesn't have, that isn't properly vented, um that's what makes the existing house FEMA compliant.
Okay. Alright, I think we should proceed with this.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Close the hearing first.
Yeah, good idea.
Maybe, I don't think there's anybody in the public who wants to be heard, but you can ask.
Yeah, boy, you guys are so good at this.
I don't know, online?
I don't have any uh race hands.
Okay, so then we are going to close fifty nine Glover to the public, and uh during your motion?
I make a motion to close a public hearing.
I second the motion.
Okay.
All in good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing has been closed, and I guess.
I'll make a motion to um ask um Brett Reiner from Nelson Pope and Voorhees to draw up a permit for this application.
Already done, you are so lucky.
Wow.
You have a permit drafted in front of you, in your package somewhere, and I'll go through it very quickly. Mike, if you're ready to get out, if you can get over to the side, the board has a little bit of detail. Few um readings, to my knowledge, and to give you a rundown to Chairman Sheriff's point. The wetland permit does specify demolition of all existing site improvements. So it's a demo of all existing site improvements. Uh reconstruction of a residence, garage, swimming pool, gravel, gravel driveway, cool terrace, covered patios, retaining walls, pool fencing, and IA OWTS.
Question, is the gravel driveway gonna be pervious, or are you gonna have one of those tar bases? Good, okay, thank you.
I do say permeable gravel driveway.
Oh, you do, I didn't, sorry, I didn't hear it.
I didn't say it.
Oh.
No, Mary Ann has brought up this case in the past, and I think it's really critical, what people call pervious is sometimes completely obscured by the fact that the subcontractor goes in, who, I see this everywhere, and they basically put an ass.
It, a oil and stone.
Yeah.
Gravel on top, yeah, um just, just, I, I know, we, we've had this conversation with, with many many people uh on, that, that we wind up consulting with, and um, and the, the especially in this case, we made very clear that this is a pervious gravel driveway, it can't be oil and stone, it cannot have any top, that's full and free fit. And um it's something that InterScience just in general does, we've had so many issues slash questions from the DEC about it, and from other regulatory issues, so.
Much appreciated.
Truly an awesome issue, that's something that we should probably discuss with Chris Talbot as well.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of how those driveways are executed.
Right.
The board has made it a point uh to make sure that these are permeable. But without being able to do inspections, it's really on the good faith of the owner and, and the developers to do that properly.
Okay.
Uh but to continue, again, we do specify it as permeable gravel driveway. Uh with a non disturbed, non corrosion buffer area, which we got to in a second, drainage structures, and a revenge of the property. This is um been found to be a type two action under SECPRA. It was also um found to be consistent with LWRP uh waterfront consistency review requirements. Uh so the permit conditions would be um pretty standard for this type of development, which would include that the IA OWTS would be approved by the health department and installed in accordance with their overview. Important distinction here is that this is a variable width, free form button buffer. The permit conditions specify that it is going to be a five thousand six hundred eighty eight square foot variable width, free form, non disturbed, non corrosion wetland buffer, excluding the structures and the cleared areas. And that is equivalent in area to a continuous solid fifty foot wetland buffer. Um Nelson Pope and Voorhees with the board worked with uh Mike and, and the product team to make sure that that in fact is going to happen. So it's written in the permit conditions, this site is within a, a one and a half miles of documented, more than longer that, so removal of trees between March first and November thirtieth, then again, year will be prohibited.
Can you just tell me those dates again, I don't know that rule.
March thirty, March first and November thirtieth.
Wow.
County, so you have between December first and February twenty eighth. This is a DEC enforced policy, um that is becoming even uh more scrupulous throughout long hours.
So that means they can't touch a tree until next December.
If they have to remove trees from the site in, in accordance with DEC policies, uh yes. Um unless they seek an Article eleven um permit from the DEC, which they have the right to do.
Um on a separate project, I think you for reminding me to mention this, we, we had, we had a discussion with um Michelle Givens and Chip Hamilton, Michelle Givens is the chief wildlife uh manager, administrator of the DEC. Uh and, and Frederick Chip Hamilton is uh like a senior analyst there. And uh their guidance currently is that um if you have a tree that's less than three inches in diameter, or if you have um coniferous trees, uh those trees, anything less than three inches in diameter, or coniferous trees can be taken down, so I, I actually have a copy list for you guys, just to, I have more copies, um it's ju- just a kind of a
This is not a board issue, this is a DEC issue.
Oh, it's good to know these things.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's, it's noted in the permit conditions, but it is the applicant's responsibility to work with the DEC on it, right?
Yeah.
To make sure that that is.
There, there's open burning allowed on um residential projects, except certain, there's a March and April, the DEC says no burning at all, and we discovered that in our neighborhood, and the local policemen were completely unaware of that. And it was unfortunate, but uh so all of these DAC things are important to know about.
So continuing against standard policies, construction, um fencing, debris shall be maintained on the property. There are documented diamondback terrapins here, uh there is a um note here about disturbance to be um avoided between March twentieth and June twentieth, due to um the possible impacts to diamondback terrapins, and then um you know, importantly, that the, the buffer area will be monitored at least once a year for a three year period, the damage to eighty five to thirty, hundred percent survival rate of the plants, and um covenants restrictions will be filed for the established framework.
Okay, so who does the monitoring for the three years?
Believe that you guys discussed this, oh, oh no, there's a, um I believe that we have to provide a report after the was it, we, that's one of the conditions that was done on previous applications, so we, we
um just, I believe it was on fifteen long points. One, I think we, that's the one that we just recently received of similar type of monitoring report, where there actually was a um potential issue with the buffer due to flooding, and um the applicant's agent is working to resolve those things as part of their monitoring program, so the onus is on uh right, right now, the onus is on the applicant to do the monitoring with qualified um companies such as InterScience or, or somebody else, and provide the reports to the harbor committee. From you by its fire moment.
I guess the issue is how does, how do we know that that happens?
I think that's something that um just, again, goes to enforcement, similar to the permeable driveways, and you know, that, that's something that Ford can discuss with Fred and ourselves, as to how we can, you know, manage the monitoring requirements that are put in place as part of these permits, similar to the covenants and restrictions, you know, I had we're gonna talk about this with eighteen Soundview, or I'm sorry, with um fifty nine um
Glover.
I believe it is the one that's on for renewals tonight, is, you know, where, where are the covenants restrictions ever filed? You know, there's nothing that's, that I know of, and I could be wrong, and frankly, correct me here, that, that says that the covenants restriction has to be filed prior to a building permit, or prior to a demo, or sorry, by, prior to a CO, so again, it goes back to the enforcement. You know, we, we, we make these conditions, but I don't know how we actually can check the checks and balances on this.
It's, it's really tricky, because if you think going out two years after a CFO, uh everybody's inundated with their current work, and then to send somebody uh up to Doris's office and say, how many projects do we have that are pending a two year or three year uh cycle? Way beyond my pay grade to figure that one out, but if we, if we put words to that effect, we need to have a follow up with enforcement, and maybe Chris Talbot, I don't know how Chris has time to follow up with this.
Well, it just needs to be on a spreadsheet, and you can sort it by dates, you know, when um I mean, I think that's the other issue, that, you know, we need to have a date when, you know, Nelson Pope has gone by and said, yes, in fact, like, the permit that we um issued was in fact installed. You know, all the little plants and trees and whatever, and the buffer and whatever, and we sign off and say, yes, this is what we permitted. And then that date, then it should cycle like every year, two, three years, you know, it should come up, we should be asking for those reports.
Yeah, so we can have these discussions.
Right.
But perhaps there is something similar to a certificate of compliance, you know, once the project is completed. In order to get a CO, there has to be an inspection by the harbor committee, or its appointed consultant to ensure that, you know, the, the project was developed in accordance with the permitted um activities.
Right.
Um but we'd have to discuss with Fred, you know, what that means, and, and the actual enforcement of that. Uh but I think that is something that we do need to discuss, similar to the covenants and restrictions, and uh similar to the monitoring program.
Right.
But in this particular instance, I think that, that, you know, maintaining status quo is that these are conditions of the permit, and that the applicant is responsible for for um thinking, going on, following through the conditions as set forward.
Okay.
So that, uh so the approved plans are noted here on the permit, and um it's the hammer survey from October fourteenth, two thousand twenty two, the construction management plan is my uh reference, and then the buffer landscape plan from January second, January sixth, two thousand twenty three, and that being said, I believe the permits in order for the board.
Great, thank you. So do I hear a motion to?
I make a motion to approve this permit.
So, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so thank you, good project.
Yeah. Say what?
Is there anything pressing that we, we can start without?
I don't know, we got five minutes. I hope we're gonna have to just roll um eighteen Soundview over and flat after Gobish's presentation.
So I guess that's what we'll do, we'll hold eighteen Soundview until after Dr. Goldber.
You have the correspondence, is there something? Fifty nine John Street. Then do eighteen Soundview after, you have to go with presentation, yeah.
Alright, April first, you're ahead of the game. Thank you.
Okay.
So do you think that we can go ahead and do this um extension of the permit on fifty nine John Street?
Yeah.
Expires April first?
Yeah.
Let's proceed with that.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Please do.
Um I make a motion to.
Man, I had one very comment on that.
Yeah, go.
What we just talked about.
Okay.
Um I believe that the permit is in order to be removed, but it, it kind of speaks to the covenants and restrictions having ever been filed, you know, as part of the original permit, or they ever filed. If so, I would just say, make it a condition that a copy be added to.
Well, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Is there anybody here to, representing this client, fifty nine John Street? Yeah. So your ideas, yeah.
Making notes about, you know, circling up on how we can track this in a more efficient manner to make sure that we're putting conditions in place with a follow through.
With a follow through.
Right, the follow through.
Yeah.
So your idea is that we vote to extend this permit, but they don't get the permit until they file the.
I, I think that that's a good condition.
I love that idea.
Yeah.
So I'll restate my motion, I make a motion to approve the extension. I make a motion to approve the extension of fifty-nine John Street, conditional on receipt, review and approval of the, what is it, covenants, meets and bounds? Covenants and restrictions.
My second.
So noted, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so.
So how long do you want it to extend it for, two years?
Yeah, it's always typically two years.
So what's involved in those covenants and restrictions? Not the specific ones, but is this something you have to go and file with the county?
There's a file with the county clerk. And we should get a copy back of the covenants with the recording information on it, so that we know that it was recorded.
So how does that happen? They come in and they give it to Doris, and Doris says, great?
She just gives it, yeah, to put in the file.
It goes into the file.
It goes, they prepare it and then it goes to?
They prepare it, I review it, I okay it, then they can record it. And then when, once it's recorded, it gets a copy of the recorded, the recorded, recording information gets filed back with the building, that's the way it should happen.
Right, and then they get their building permit, their Harvard Committee permit.
The question is, you know, when in, you know, the, my opinion, yeah, that should happen before you get your building permit.
I think that's.
Before you get your C O.
Well, I think that's the motion I just made.
Yeah, well, the motion we just made was to extend their wetlands permit, but.
Right, conditional on the receipt and review of?
I mean, you know, in a typical case, you might not get an extension. If you don't have these covenants and restrictions, at least before they get, they apply for a C O, you have absolutely no way of getting them after that.
You don't?
How? Yeah, who, what's the enforcement?
I guess, but I think to Fred's point, and actually to my point now, I'm seeing here that we do give a copy of a template with the permit to the applicant with a list of instructions, and in the instruction it says that the proof of the clerk recording and endorsement page to be given to the board before a certificate of occupancy will be issued. But how often does a board recognize the receipt of that?
Well, it should be in the file. And then the building inspector should look in the file before he issues a C O to see that the covenants have been filed.
Correct.
That's the process, that's how it should work.
But we were just going to try to like flip that around, say that they don't get the, I mean, how long is that process to file those covenants?
That's a great question, with the, with the situation in the county clerk's office after the?
The hacking?
Tiffany, what's your experience?
About three months.
Yeah, it's been a while.
You can just walk them in, get them in that day. If you take one person who's not the one, the title company comes in and brings one document, get it recorded.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Well, that's good to know. It's been an adventure, but I have to acknowledge, particularly since the cyber attack on the county.
It seems almost like we need to like ask that to happen before they get their extension of the building, of the wetlands permit.
Well, that's what we just did.
You just know that.
Okay.
But for ones who were issuing new permits, the only process that's in place.
Okay, I thought we were talking specifically.
To make sure we get them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's fine. And that brought us to six o'clock. Dr. Goldblatt.
I'm ready, but I'm going to need to make some connections here.
Okay, let me, let me give a brief introduction.
Well, we, I think, so I know this is supposed to be on Zoom.
Right.
So how, is that already happening?
Yes.
Yeah.
And how do I, I need to figure out how I'm going to connect.
Right. So? Doris will help you.
Long into Zoom, or do I just need to present on this?
Do you want to share, right?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so then yes. You have to. Yes, you have to.
So. Password for the meeting room?
Uh, password for the meeting room?
I'm going side court.
Who's side court?
We have somebody knocking on the door?
It's one, six, seven, two, zero, X.
For which one?
The Zoom.
It's not just me.
You've seen that?
No. I just work.
I just steal downstairs, get it, you're like.
The Bureau?
Yeah, you have to buy an extra, the first week.
Buy extra wine?
You gotta buy extra wine, you gotta buy, into subscription, it's not a Netflix thing, it's really.
What is this, HBO Max or something?
Well, it's whatever it is, but check it out, and it's, you, it's like. Diversion. Diversion.
You said it was the Bureau?
That was you.
The Bureau, yeah. Yes, Tiffany?
I just, this wasn't on the agenda, so I'm not sure what, what this is at six o'clock, but it's an hour into the meeting now, I doubt we're going to get any further members out of town and do the dinner reservations that was in county on people for two hours. So.
But are you representing?
Two decisions that are on.
Yeah, I, we're going to do them at the special meeting.
Okay, that's all I wanted to do.
We'll spark it with those. One that is.
I'm sorry, I thought you, you heard that.
No, I didn't, I was sure we were going to do that.
So, yeah, we know this, you know. We can send you a copy of the notice.
I'll check in with ours anyway, thank you very much.
Right, okay.
Why do we have to adjourn? Because, well, because they requested an adjournment, but we still have to give it to, oh, I see. And adjourn it to equal six.
What we've done, John, uh?
On this machine.
Did you text him or he doesn't?
I called him on two phones, yeah, and texted him. So I would just like to introduce Dr. Christopher Goldblatt, who has been our resource without a parallel, and. I like to refer to this, maybe you do too, Dr. Goldblatt, as the state of the bay. I don't know. The center for water technology, maybe if you get clear water technology, maybe you could give us a little bit of a explanation of what that does.
Sure, yeah, well, I've been on the, I've been in the campus at Southampton since nineteen ninety-nine, actually, as a professor. Joined Stony Brook University in two thousand and five, when that university took over that campus, and became the director of the New York State Center for Clean Water Technology in two thousand and eighteen. And New York State Center for Clean Water Technology has multiple focuses. Chief among them is addressing onsite wastewater and solutions for that across up a county and beyond. But also doing work on addressing drinking water issues as well, things like PFOS contamination, one for the Alex and other contaminants, and also just general sort of groundwater contamination. Yeah, and this is, I don't know what year, I tried to do the math.
We first started talking in two thousand and sixteen, the first year we did sampling was in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay.
So this is our five, fifth year anniversary.
Okay.
Excellent.
And so I have, I have a presentation all ready to go. Can't bring that up. Okay, all right, I'm ready to go, thank you for your patience. It's great, I know some people are online, so it's great that we can do that. Of course, it makes it a little bit more complicated, but we're all set to go now. Okay, so I'm just going to start with some general background.
Wait, can I do one thing? Can we rotate that? Doris, can we rotate that screen so that the people who came here to watch this presentation? Do you want me to do that? Am I taller?
Yes.
Oh, look at.
Maybe you can have it on both screens.
Yeah, and can we have it on both screens?
That's great. Where am I? You can be right here. So Chris is.
We need a staff on here as well, please?
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Meanwhile, maybe I'll just keep going here. So just some general background, if you all know the state you live in here, particularly on the South Fork, but you know, the water that hits land, Italy has two, has two critical banks. It's either going to be our drinking water supply, or it's going to enter surface waters. And in either case, it's going to have a direct impact on everybody living inner around the watershed. And, you know, there've been many studies done of many places across up a county, including here in Sag Harbor, is one of my studies showing that most of the nitrogen coming from land going into coastal waters is from wastewater. I think the number is something like seventy percent for Sag Harbor and Sag Harbor Cove. And we know this can exact an effect on surface waters, as shown here, just a map of all Long Island. This represents just four months last year, June through September, and showing water quality impairment.
Thank you, Doris.
That has occurred, low oxygen or harmful algal blooms, many of which are the direct result of overboating. So some of the things I'm going to talk about today, one of them is harmful algal blooms. So specifically the overgrowth of a particular algae to a density that can have a negative impact on human health or an ecosystem. And I'm also going to talk about fecal bacteria, something I might not want to necessarily think about, but is, can be an issue in surface waters where somehow bacteria from the intestines of warm-blooded animals can get into surface waters and can have a negative effect on human health due to either swimming in such water or the consumption of shellfish. And I'm now admitting people to the meeting. Okay, very good, here comes Billy Mac. All right, no, no problem, okay.
I'll take care of that.
And those pathogenic, potentially pathogenic bacteria can get into surface water from all sorts of different sources, surface runoff, infected from other water bodies, sewage plants, septic systems, etc. And there's two major groups of bacteria I'll be talking about today and considering, and that's fecal coliform bacteria. D E C uses that to declare a shellfish bed open or closed, and then enter a caucus, which is what the D O H and the County Health Department uses for declaring a haven beach fit or not fit for basin. And just for perspective, there are multiple areas across Sag Harbor that are not open to shellfishing. You can see the area in red is closed permanently for shellfishing, or the areas in red, where the areas in blue are seasonally closed. And I think the season, it's usually closed, I believe, during summer. So you can see much of Sag, well, in the areas you don't see, you can, you can guess, like these areas over here and extending in through Sag Harbor Cove is open, just this area here that is closed. And so beyond just looking at the levels of those bacteria that you, is done also by different agencies, Health Department, D E C. One advanced tool that we bring to our study is called microbial source tracking. So this is specifically using DNA of the bacteria that reside in the gastrointestinal systems of different types of animals, and detecting those bacteria that again are specific to specific groups. So we can say not only are the bacteria levels high or low, but where might those fecal bacteria be coming from? And these are the general categories of bacteria that we're, hosts that we're looking at. Okay, so just some general previous findings, since we have been doing this for quite some time. We have found water quality impairments in the past with regards to nitrogen, dissolved oxygen, water clarity, algal blooms, fecal bacteria. As I mentioned, well, I didn't mention it, but we have done experiments looking at nitrogen and its ability to promote phytoplankton blooms and other water quality impairments. We have identified wastewater from onsite septic systems, the main source of nitrogen, to both Sag Harbor and Sag Harbor Cove. And we identified that in the inner harbor area, we have seen a signal of human bacteria, whereas in areas away from that, say like Haven's Beach, it's been more related to small mammals, dogs, and birds. Okay, so for the, this year, we focused once again on Haven's Beach. We did a focus on fecal bacteria, specifically looking at storm drains and the sewage plant. And then we looked at marine water quality in general and used a few different approaches on that front. And so in this, even though it's, I'm giving one presentation, it really has three different parts. So it's the, what I, this in the red here, what I call the marine water bodies that we looked at. And the yellow is the Haven's Beach study. And then in the blue is what I call the source water study, and understanding the sources of pollutants in those waters. So I'm going to start with the marine waters, and specifically in and around Sag, for the most part, Sag Harbor Cove. And you can see the sampling sites there. And I guess just get right into some data now. And specifically, temperature, not a lot to say here, except for the fact that it was, while it was a warm summer, it wasn't necessarily a record setting. We didn't see ultra-high heat. And the records here of individual weekly measurements were fairly consistent with a continuous logger that we had in Sag Harbor Cove. And again, you can see here, it got warm fast and stayed that way, but didn't get to ridiculous heat levels that we've seen in some prior years. On the dissolved oxygen front, similar kind of trend here, I throw in, I put in in the dash line, the D E C is dissolved oxygen minimum, that would be called the chronic dissolved oxygen minimum. And what you can see is that most of the oxygen is above that, the exception there is the water just on a few days coming out of Otter Pond and from there into Sag Harbor, upper Sag Harbor Cove. And so just as a reminder, just going back two slides there, you can see that we did have a focus on what's coming out of Otter Pond and therefore going into upper Sag Harbor Cove, measuring either end of the culvert here. And, yeah, but in the marine waters and surface waters, the levels of oxygen are fairly good, which would be expected when you make a measurement during the day, usually daytime measurements are quite good. We did have a continuous logger in Sag Harbor Cove, that this captures what we call day-night cycling. And so what you can see is when you do a count for nighttime measurements, you do see more excursions with regards to oxygen. It's really pre-dawn that we typically see low oxygen levels. And this isn't surprising, we've seen this in the past back in Sag Harbor Cove as well. And this is not even upper Sag Harbor Cove, this is, which confusingly is actually upper Sag Harbor, but it's south of Sag Harbor Cove. Anyway, the condition within upper Sag Harbor Cove would be even more traumatic. And water clarity, the data set's limited, because many of the sites were very, very shallow, where you couldn't see to the bottom. But where you could see to the bottom, the two sites in upper and regular Sag Harbor Cove, you can see the upper Sag Harbor Cove site, we had very low water clarity. In general, what you want to see is two meters of water visibility. That's generally a good standard for both eugras, but actually for swimming as well. If you look at the standards for swimming in the Department of Health, it tells you you want at least four feet or one point three meters of water clarity. So we're, you know, we're not getting around close, we're not there for upper Sag Harbor Cove, but we are for Sag Harbor Cove. And then looking at levels of algae, moving on, sorry. Generally, levels were fine, with the exception of that water again coming out of the culvert from Otter Pond, as well as the, the water within, going directly. going directly into that culvert, into upper Sag Harbor Cove. And then on an occasion during an algal bloom, very high levels within Sag Harbor Cove. So looking at what these algae are, we looked at a few different of the, a few different harmful algal blooms. We looked at Alexander, probably the most dangerous of the different harmful algal blooms. And in happy news, we had very, very low levels the entire season for this particular harmful algal bloom. So that, that was good news. We also looked at a second, the second diagnosis we looked at, Dionyphysis, that makes oleodatic acid, reached higher levels. This is a seasonal occurrence, so we only saw it in spring, and then it tailed off by summer. But certainly in May, we had very high levels, probably amongst the highest we've seen there. And you can see levels persistent above the thousand cells per liter mark throughout that season. That's pretty high, we've seen, that's high enough to get toxins in the shellfish. But this is an area that is largely, at least part of it, closed to shellfish. The most consistent harmful algal bloom we've seen in Sag Harbor has been what we call rust tide, that typically show up in late summer. And that showed up as on cue in late summer. You can see it was most persistent, interestingly, in, it has been in the past in upper Sag Harbor Cove, on some dates actually getting into Otter Pond, probably tidally and growing there, and also in the culvert coming out into upper Sag Harbor Cove. But anything above the dash line is above the threshold for what we would call ichthyotoxicity. This particular harmful algal bloom is of no threat to human health. You can swim in the water, you might get a little itchy, but, but it is a serious threat to marine life. It's ichthyotoxic, means it can kill fish, it's also been shown to kill shellfish. So this wasn't necessarily a terrible year, but, you know, it did show up and was present for at least a good month from late August through into September. Okay, so we, in conjunction with the Pecan Gastrary Program, we were able to do a little bit of an expanded study in Sag Harbor Cove. Actually, it wasn't even part of what was supported, but I just wanna share the results briefly because it's directly relevant. And again, this is, I credit the Pecan Gastrary Partnership here, and specifically the Director Joyce Novak. She specifically said, she, she, she wanted me to work in Sag Harbor. And specifically, this is a really good thing, she said, well, they're a very engaged community. So I think your interest in water quality is something that brought, she specifically then could've picked any site. And that's one of the reasons she chose Sag Harbor and Sag Harbor Cove, because she recognized that the engagement of the community here, and the engagement of the town, Town Southampton in particular, which I think is what directed the study towards the coves, of course, the harbor as well. Not that East Hampton's not supported, but that was her rationale for making this one of the sites. So I wanna share this, there's a lot of bars to look at here, it's a little confusing, but it's, once I introduce it, it won't be. What this represents is a series of experiments conducted from May into June. You can see, I guess it's a total of about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven experiments. And, you know, what we like in science is consistency, and they all achieve the same thing. So what these experiments were on each date were what we call incubation experiments. We collected water from the cove, and we did one of four things. We left it alone, we called that a control, didn't do anything to it. Or we added nitrogen, which is the N in the yellow, phosphorus, green, P, or both of those compounds. And so what you see is that in every single case, the addition of nitrogen significantly increased the levels of algae in the water. And in many cases, the addition of phosphorus either didn't have much of an additional effect, or only a small additional effect. So it was definitely the nitrogen, and overloading of nitrogen, that was driving the ship here, so to speak, steering the ship and leading to the high levels of algae. And you can see in a short period of time during these experiments, which I believe were only forty-eight hours long, as an example, in the June first experiment, we had levels of algae increasing by almost seven-fold. So a very, what we'd call nitrogen-responsive system. And then just as some examples to go along with that, the, the target here was actually the harmful algal bloom. So in the first experiment, we actually had, I told you, the levels of Alexander were so low. This is what we actually measured in the beginning. Now, they liked our experimental design, so even with adding nothing, they grew up. But what you can see is that the, we had fourfold higher levels of Alexander with the addition of nitrogen. So again, just showing the importance there. With Dionyphysis, it was maybe the least consistent of them all, but still, out of five experiments, there were three where the highest amount of biomass of Dionyphysis was from the nitrogen. So just sort of affirming that if you add more nitrogen, you're going to get more algae and more of these harmful algal blooms, which should be motivation for taking actions to mitigate. This year, for the first time, we actually measured levels of nitrogen. So we measured two types, one called inorganic nitrogen, and one with total nitrogen. The inorganic nitrogen is, there's no standard for it, 'cause I put up here a Goldler guidance value, because in my years of looking at coastal waters, that's about the level above, if you get above about point one milligrams per liter, that's sort of a high level. And so what you can see is the water coming out of Otter Pond is above that. But the water in the cove and upper cove are below, but it was above it again at Windmill Beach. The total nitrogen is something we really can hang our hat on, because the Conga History Program had a guidance value for that, a point one milligrams per liter, that's been adapted by other, adopted by other programs across the country as well. And again, you can see that that source water coming out of Otter Pond is a strong source of nitrogen. But that the other water, the other water bodies seem to be within the range you'd wanna see. Something new that we did last year for the first time in Sag Harbor was water quality mapping. What you're looking at here is an SUV, so that's not like the SUV you would drive, but this is a surface under, well, it's, it's a surface, it's an autonomous vehicle. It's a catamaran that we pre-programmed, and we can have drive through the water. And in the hull of the catamaran are water quality sensors. And so we're able to generate maps. We did this twice, I'm just gonna show one set of this. We wanted to do it three times, and the catamaran, hi-cat sort of ran out of gas, so to speak. We had some technical issues in September. I'm showing mainly the, the July results here, because they're sort of, that show the most contrast. But all the data, to me, is fairly interesting. I could show the tracks, but essentially we drove, it's like you do lawnmower, you go back and forth in each water body, and then using GIS, we come up with these plots. So the temperatures here are of interest, you know, sea grass really wants twenty-four degrees and lower. So what you can see is we're in July, we're way above that here in the, in the upper cove, and even in Sag Harbor Cove, even above that level as well. Salinity, no surprise, but again, showing the strong source of fresh water coming out of Otter Pond, and probably looking like some strong groundwater or creek input in this general region here as well. pH is, of course, important for shellfish. And you can see a low pH signal again coming out of Otter Pond here. Most of these values are just fine for shellfish. Probably it would be only this area right down here that might be of concern. And with regards to dissolved oxygen, what we actually see here is that, this is actually linked to the next slide, but all these levels are just fine, again, they're during the day. But you can see high levels of oxygen back here during the day, and that's linked to the fact you have high levels of algae that are photosynthesizing. But you can see this water, by virtue of all the data, so if we look at like, for example, the salinity, it shows us fresh water sources, but this also tells us, not necessarily surprising, right, this water is isolated, so it is not moving, it's taking time for this to work its way out. And you do that, you know, the pinch point here, with the pinch point, you can see right there, that's not necessarily a surprise. But what that's doing is it's keeping the algae, or any algae, phytoplankton blooms, for example, back and retained in here and leading to these high levels. Remember, the guidance value is twenty micrograms per liter, so we're, you know, we're not far off from that. In some cases, probably above that back in the cove, and it just, you know, this just shows that this is a sensitive water body. You know, the two things that can lead to poor water body conditions, overloading of nitrogen and poor circulation. Right, and so this, this particular part of the water body clearly has both of those conditions. The water, you know, is not, is being retained in here, that's why you're getting these algal blooms. The water's retained, the nitrogen's retained, and the algae are not flushed out tightly. And that's what leads to those conditions. Okay, I'm gonna move towards bacteria, but I wanna, as a context for that, just remind people of the conditions we had last summer. You may recall, we had a pretty dry summer. In fact, it's hard to remember last summer, it's so long ago. But you can see here, the average monthly rainfall is about four inches. And we were way below that in July, and actually way below that for most of August until the end of the month. And I just bring that as perspective, because the rainfall would be delivering surface runoff, which could be delivering bacteria. Okay, so these are the levels of fecal coliform bacteria, and some of these levels are quite high. You can see there's different bars for the different dates here. Remember, some of these areas are closed to shellfishing, places like Windmill Beach and Sag Harbor Cove. So the upshot is clearly Otter Pond is a strong source of fecal coliform bacteria. And even though upper Sag Harbor Cove is closed to shellfishing, we did have, excuse me, open to shellfishing, to my knowledge. We did have some dates that exceeded that standard there, so that's a little troubling. And clearly, we have Otter Pond as definitely a source of bacteria that are being flushed in to that region. The data on the Entercaucus, which is what's used for the swimming standard, now this, we can consider all the waters, maybe no one's swimming in Otter Pond, maybe no one's, obviously no one's swimming in the culvert itself. But I highlighted here the number of samples that exceed that swimming standard. And of concern, you can see here, and this is consistent with what we found last year, a third of the samples from Windmill Beach were above that standard. And again, if the term beach is being used, that is, you know, probably a little bit of a problem. Whereas back in the cove, the levels were actually lower. So suggesting there's something closer to Windmill Beach that is probably a source there. So this is our DNA-based information, and I'm gonna give sort of a summary of all that data at the end, but I just wanted to link it to what you just saw there. And so firstly, again, strong, this, this data pretty much mimics what we saw for the other data. These analyses are very, very expensive and very labor-intensive. So we didn't do all the dates, but rather picked dates from July, August, and September, when we expected the levels. Where we had already done the other bacteria levels, we knew the levels were high. So just very briefly, what it's telling us is that we've got birds as the dominant source in Otter Pond coming into the cove, it's still birds, but you're also getting, obviously, there's other things that are in there as well. And recognize, if it's the water moving, there could be a few things at play here. It could be some bacteria preferentially transported slash retained. You know, the, what you see in the upper cove, again, is mainly the, the dog, small mammal signal. Sag Harbor Cove, a mix, and we've seen this before, you start actually seeing a human signal up in there, and that's what we've seen before, there's marinas in there, we pointed to that being a potential source. And then Windmill Beach, you're seeing a little bit of everything. So that's of interest, and, you know, that's, these are stronger, the stronger deer signals that we've seen, which is of course surprising, there's no deer in there necessarily, but if we're talking about surface runoff, then it doesn't necessarily need to be that exact site. Okay. So moving to the second part here, Haven's Beach, we studied this area before. And so our design was quite similar, where we're getting samples from the pipe that feeds the ditch that then runs out into the beach. So we're sampling within the ditch, when possible, the outgoing pipe, and then certainly on the beach as well. And just as a reminder, the way it looks there, you can see when there's high flow, you get, there's communication of the water, or delivery of the water from the sump out into the beach. You can see what that looks like over here. Okay, so temperatures, nothing exciting to report here, except for the fact that within the ditch, the, the water gets pretty warm. Just confirmation of what we would've expected, it's fully marine water out on the beach, and fully fresh water coming from that ditch out towards the beach. Looks like that the water within that ditch can be pretty low in oxygen, inoxic, not necessarily surprising, it's probably stagnant. But the oxygen levels out in the beach were, were good. This is an aerial image like off of Google Maps, and when I first saw this, that, you know, it looks like some kind of ominous green tinge, very bright fluorescent coming out of there, which could be blue-green algae. So we did sample what was in the sump with regards to levels of phytoplankton. We did see blue-green algae, but not above the regulatory level, but in some cases, very, very high levels of total phytoplankton. You can see here, we put in a twenty of the NOAA EPA standard for total chlorophyll, well above that on multiple dates. So at least we know it's, it's a natural source that, that is algae, but not blue-green algae, which is good. Or only partly, I should say, there's other things as well. And, you know, even though it is washing out into the beach, the levels of total phytoplankton within the beach are reasonable. Looking at the nitrogen levels, some pretty high levels of inorganic nitrogen coming out of that sump there. You can see much higher than what you see at the beach, and then even the beach level's sort of getting to a moderate level. And then looking at total nitrogen, you can see, again, that feeder pipe, what's coming out of that is very, very high, four times the standard for the Pecan Gastrary Program. But again, thanks for the surface waters, they're not well above that. The bacteria data, though, not exactly what we'd wanna see. Once again, very high levels within the ditch, the feeding pipe and all of it. So you can see, you know, in some cases, we were not able to get samples. In some cases, it wasn't, this water wasn't necessarily flowing out. But in any case that we did get a sample, it was above the standard. And again, I thought I had the percentages here, oh, no, I didn't, I don't have the percentages there. But you can see multiple dates above the shellfishing standard. And then on the swimming front, this is where I did the percentages. Again, most, all of this, it doesn't, in some cases, the total levels of Entercaucus not quite as bad, but you can see maxed out in many cases. And somewhere, depending on which place we sample, twenty-two to forty-four percent of the samples above the swimming standard. And this, of course, is a swimming beach, so that is, that's a problem, and that needs to be addressed.
Can you clarify for a moment? One thing that we wanted to do is we wanted to sample at the outlet of the sump, that side of the beach, but we also wanted to sample at the bathing beach. And our, is one of those east and west, 'cause before we'd sampled like a little bit to the east, a little bit to the west of the outflow.
This is to the east and the west on the beach, that's what it's.
Right, where the sump, right? It's not sampling at the bathing beach?
Well.
That's like a hundred yards down the pipe.
Yeah, let me just show precisely on the map.
Okay.
So it's, yeah, it is actually out on the bathing beach.
No, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, bathing beach west, right, okay.
Yeah. So now they, of course, the interesting thing, oh, so now going to what kind, where the bacteria are coming from, you can see within the ditch, we do get a bird signal, not surprising, right? There's probably birds that make that their, their home and habitat, but clearly street runoff getting dog and small mammal bacteria in there, and then once out on the beach, it's mainly that dog and small mammal signal.
Doctor, I would like to add something.
Yeah.
I, I've seen on numerous occasions what appear to be either muskrats or, or rubber otters in, in the ditch. It's hard to tell, I can just see the head mostly, and the, you know. With them living there, I mean, I would assume that that would account for a good deal of that dog or small mammal
Sure, yeah.
signal, and you're not differentiating between the, you know, between the two.
Correct.
Or able to differentiate clearly between the two.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. And as I pointed out before, this isn't necessarily new news, that my first study of Haven's Beach was actually 2008. And if we go back to that study, it actually didn't look too far off of what we did this year. We just, in this case, we went back from one particular site, but found, in this case, we were using total coliform bacteria, which is a little bit different than what we measured now, and is not really the preferred standard, but you can just see the very, and the scale here is a log scale, but the very, very high levels within, within the ditch, and then the, being above what was then the standards out in the surface waters. But this is a trend through, you know, also affirmed in 2020, 2021. So, you know, clearly something that requires more attention.
So can you flip back to the other one? So can you flip back to the other one? I don't under. So this isn't a log scale, the other one is a log scale. So this is like. And it doesn't go beyond four hundred.
The assay maxes out at four hundred.
Right, so then when you flip back to two thousand and eight, it's going up to like ten thousand, right?
But this is total coliform bacteria, so you can't.
Apples and.
Fecal coliform bacteria is a subset of, you can't, if it's apples and oranges, this, you'd expect this to be higher.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is there any sense that things aren't as bad as they were back then in two thousand and eight, or is it all still a big mess?
I, you can't compare the data, but I mean, I think all that, I mean, just being frank. This is all you need to know, whether it's getting better or worse. You know, there's a situation that's, you know, potentially putting people at, and just making a plane at risk swimming.
So it's interesting, it's like beach west, which is, like I said, I don't know, like a fifty yards, a hundred yards away from the sump. Is twice as bad as beach east, which is at the outlet.
Yeah, well, there may, there may be preferential flow, you know.
Yeah.
Not sure, but regardless, it's not.
Is, is there, i- is, is there data with your sampling which would show what the weather conditions are? In other words, i- is it, you know, surely after a storm? I know, looking at the DEC reports, they do show, you know, weather conditions as, as to whether it was shortly after a rain or. Or not, and, and, and that makes a big difference in terms of the question, is it, is it only a stormwater problem? When we're getting a large runoff from, from the street, you know, in that first, first flush. That, that, you know, takes all the crap off the street and, and, and down, and comes through the overflow pipes, doesn't go through the filters. Is, is that when the problem is, or is there a, you know, day-to-day problem even during a dry, dry summer?
I, I can't answer that now, but that, obviously, that can be very easily ascertained, so that's something we can put together. Yeah. Okay, and then the final point here is we did some sampling, we got samples from both the sewage treatment plant. And then from two storm drains, you can see here, they're labeled beacon one and beacon two. And so these are storm drains that feed into what centers the beacon vault. And the beacon vault then discharges into the surface waters right around by the marina here. So the first thing, I can talk about sewage treatment plant. We measure for bacteria, and we did see a couple of occasions where the bacteria were above. What you'd want to see for a shell fishing standard, and no one's shell fishing within the sewage treatment plant. Clearly, you can see the levels of the Entracoccus are way below the standard. But there is some sort of fecal bacteria that are getting through, not on all dates, you can see, but on some dates. Most cases, the levels are very, very low, but a couple of exceptions here.
This live or dead?
Uh, this is live, yeah, and that's a good question, John, so.
I, I, because of the ultraviolet treatment, that, that, that. So this is, this is an assay. That's, that's not.
They're, they're making it through, because this is an assay where we're culturing the water and seeing what grows, that's how these assays work, what grows in those conditions.
And these samples were taken from inside the sewage treatment plant right before it leaves, it wasn't like from the discharge pipe?
These were given to us, so we.
By the sewage treatment plant people?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
On the nitrogen front, the levels were ridiculously low, shockingly low. So, and just for, so this is the levels of integrated nitrogen, total nitrogen, just for perspective. You know, the standard Suffolk County sets for onsite septic systems is nineteen milligrams per liter. A regular, normal sewage treatment plant that's actually treating for nitrogen, so not like a, like, that were the goal of those treated with nitrogen. It's usually around ten, and some of the best systems would be like around five, both for onsite and septic systems. So at less than two, that's remarkable, frankly. And that's a great, great thing to know and a great resource, I'll talk about that a little bit later. So again, the other thing we did was sample the two storm drains, and so I. I have a general sense based on what I'm told about how this works, but there are low-lying areas in the village. And you can see some of the areas that are getting pumped out that are north, no, south. Of where these areas are, so we sampled two storm drains that then go into the vault, this is where the, you can see, this is a picture of a student in the vault from twenty twenty-one. And then from there, the water from the vault flows out into the harbor. And so we collected from both of those two different storm drains, we called them beacon one and beacon two. And not necessarily surprising, very high levels of bacteria in this water. That's running through the storm drains, both, you know, higher for fecal coliform, but on many dates, very high for Entracoccus as well. And high levels of nitrogen. You know, I put in lines here to compare it to the sewage treatment plant, this isn't necessarily, I mean, it's runoff, so you're expected to have nitrogen. This is actually, the comparison is more to show how, what a good job that the sewage treatment plant is doing. You know, the levels coming out are, in some cases, double of what the sewage treatment plant is charging. Which again, remarkable job, this sewage treatment plant here. Okay, and then now, just to look at all of the microbial source tracking, because I put it together in pieces, but I think looking at it as a whole also has some value. And I'm wrapping up, by the way. So the, just to show here, this is absolute values, the next plot I'm going to show is relative abundance. So, and you see, you can't quite see the marine tech, but you, I wanted you to see the general trend, whereas. In the levels are there in the marine sites, but around the Havens Beach site, they're even higher. And again, so a couple of the dates, the sites, you know, at the beach, the levels were really high, like high. And, and again, just for comparison, you know, these are other, what, these three, Upper Sag Harbor Cove, Sag Harbor Cove, Windmill Beach. Those are all marine sites as well, right? So it really just does then jump out that the, the, the beach there is experiencing high levels of bacteria. This is the first time you're seeing this data, so, you know, no surprise, where's the bacteria coming from for sewage treatment plant? Well, it's from humans, right, that's, we know the assay's working, so that's good. And again, you get a mixed bag that there are, to my understanding, the two beacon sites are coming from different regions. You know, one of. More of a small mammal signal, but again, these are levels that are significantly higher than we're seeing elsewhere. And then this is just what we call relative abundance plot. And again, just showing as expected, the sewage treatment plant mainly human, other places mainly from dogs and small mammals. Although in some places, you do get a fairly strong bird signal as well. Okay, so just some final wrap-up thoughts then. So, you know, nitrogen is the main promoter of water quality impairment. Wastewater is the main source of that, so upgrading those systems only makes sense. And, you know, I pointed out, the sewage treatment plant actually is doing a good job of removing nitrogen. So, you know, there should be consideration of where does it make sense to hook up to that sewage treatment plant? And where does it make sense to just start doing IA systems? You know, usually, the further away you are, the more it's going to cost. And it can get pretty expensive, so I don't know what builders are charged all these things to consider, but. You know, there's been some studies where it can be like fifty to a hundred thousand dollars a home to hook things up, but that's when you're going a far distance. There's probably opportunities to do cost-effective connections nearby. And then, of course, the county has its IA system, many approved. Systems, I'll just do a quick plug of the Center for Clean Water Technology, our nitrogen-moving biofilters. One of them at least, our line system is actually one of the top, or the top performer in the county presently. And it's, it also removes other things you don't want in water, like pharmaceuticals and drugs. And in happy news is, we expect it's going to be provisionally approved for general installation this month.
Yay!
So, yeah.
What kind of water table is that effective in?
It has a depth of about three feet, so, you know, you couldn't put it in a really shallow area, but. You know, and, and actually, we have, this one, we have, in some cases, made them shallower but wider. Which is an option as well, but ideal, optimally at least three or four feet.
Mash Park, it looked like it was much deeper.
It depends, I think those were line systems.
Yeah.
It shouldn't have been, the bottom, the, the bottom of the line system shouldn't be much more. It, the, the only thing is that it, underneath the line systems, the water does get collected and then diverted from there, so. That could add a foot as well, the online systems, yeah, are probably three to four, it is, I'm thinking about it. It does need to be a collection pipe underneath the lines, so that would account for.
Okay.
And we actually have a landscaper who's interested in making this, his business. He's a, does both landscaping, but both, as well as landscape design and construction as well. And is interested in, and is sort of a degree in landscaping and wants to make this part of what they do, so stay tuned on that. And I think I'll skip over that for now, just to keep things rolling here. And just think about some other management areas, you know, again, Havens Beach is a beach for swimming, also is open for shell fishing. So some of the data that they've shown today is troubling. You know, mitigating that runoff really needs to be a priority. I'll leave it at that, I, I don't want to overstate things, but. You know, in the past, we have found that it looks like there could be bacteria come from marinas, so. Obviously, want to make sure that service, that pump-out boats are being used there. Clearly, the beacon vault and the runoff coming from that is a strong source. I, the only caveat I will give is that I showed today concentrations. And so those concentrations need to be coupled with volume of water to be put in the context of how strong of a source it actually is. Right, so even though those sumps are loaded with bacteria, so with the highest, maybe the highest levels. You need the total flow going on to put that in the perspective and compare it to some of the other sources. But, but clearly, strong source of fecal bacteria. And, you know, Windmill Beach, again, is an area where often over the, the bacterial limit for swimming. So should, that should be considered also. Okay, so done, you know, I did emphasize poor water quality, and of course, we honed in on the areas that are problematic, but. All in all, actually, the water quality in general is good, again, over emphasizing that. We're, sampling errors we know will be bad, because we want to make everything. But we did find multiple water quality impairments, the sump at Havens is obviously a problem. And so addressing that is a, should be a priority. You know, the, the beacon discharge is also something to be concerned with. And thinking about how that can be treated before it goes out should be considered. We've shown actually more clearly than ever before, the nitrogen is driving these water quality impairments, so. Upgrading septic and connecting to the sewage treatment plant was certainly going to lead to improvements there. And obviously, continued monitoring helps document things as they change. So I'll thank Mary Ann for her tireless effort in getting the whole study done. She does all sorts of backflips to get all sorts of people contributing to make this happen, and connecting to the university and the different trustees, so. Wouldn't be here were not for her efforts, so appreciate that, and the, the water quality committee as well. And all the people who have contributed to the study. And I'll definitely call out, in my lab, Jen Gilleski, Ruthie Drinkwater, Tim Wong, Lucas Chan. And many other people who are involved in both the sampling, but also this year, helping with the report writing as well. And I do, I can send tonight the report along with the presentation.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm done, and I'm happy to take any questions.
The sobering observation that I see is that. The only place humans can really swim are along Long Beach. From, from, from the eastern part of Sag Harbor, which is Little Northwest Creek, all along that beach past Havens. Certainly, it looks like it's not suitable for swimming, and in the Cove, it would seem the same.
I, I just, I will just say that within Upper Sag Harbor Cove and Sag Harbor Cove, actually, it was only on one occasion that the swimming standard was. It was, was over, so, which is ironic, but, but again, the caveat, you know, we're focused in an area we know is probably that. There, there may be other areas that, that are also okay as well.
So we, one, one last follow-up, do we have any. Information about illness that's actually been contracted by anybody swimming in any of these waters?
I, I certainly don't, but, yeah.
Because it's pretty scary information that you present, and anytime you walk along Havens Beach or Windmill. You tip in the summer, you certainly see people in the morning.
And little kids.
Yeah, I mean, on the one hand, you could say, well, in the majority of cases, it wasn't above the swimming standard. And of course, the standard are made to be conservative, but still, there were plenty of dates where it was above the standard, and.
So when you were like sampling from Havens Beach or Windmill Beach, were you there like where the little kids are splashing around? Is that where you sampled, how close to the shore did you actually?
To be really near shore to, for that, to capture that exact scenario, yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about the effects of having low dissolved oxygen? I'm not sure everybody in the audience understands what that endangers.
You know, if you have low dissolved oxygen, fish are not going to be hanging around much, they'll be leaving. Now, it, it does seem to be day-night cycles, but, you know, if it gets too severe, then the fish would probably not want to be there at all. And if it's repeated low oxygen, it could impede on biodiversity, there could be other things that can, you know, scallops, for example, are more sensitive to low oxygen than. Than other shellfish and the other forms of marine life, so, and, you know, everything outside of bacteria needs oxygen to live. You know, like I said, during the day, everything's fine, but you do get excursions at night, particularly in the upper Cove.
Is there any hope for Otter Pond?
Well, I mean.
I've seen fish in there quite recently.
I'm sure there's plenty of life in there, you know, and it's, it's a pond, so what's happening is that you, you know, it's. And then everything slopes down, so there's probably lots of birds there. And because everything slopes down, it makes it a strong source of bacteria and, and of nitrogen. And, you know, as I, I think it actually has two-way flow as well.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so the salinity there is, you know, it's a saline water body.
But there's also outflow pipes, outfall pipes that go into Otter Pond.
Yeah, so that is certainly contributing bacteria as well, so. So I mean, you know, as far as any hope, I don't know what. Yeah, I mean. More than, it, it's difficult, because it's, you know, I showed, I showed already with our mapping that we did, that's a very stagnant area. And then Otter Pond is sort of, you know, isolated on its own as well, so.
It, it's just a sobering image that these iconic places are not fit for human participation by and large. I mean, if one was putting children into that, into these waters, it would be. It would be a crime in a certain sense. And I, I think your information is really helpful to make this community aware of what, what we have here. And some of this information is pretty sobering, I don't know, in the history of Havens Beach. If the, if, if it, has it improved substantially, or is it improving, is there a?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, our very old study two thousand eight was based on total coliform bacteria. We could look at those levels again and say, you know, maybe things are a little bit better.
But they're still bad, so what are you going to do, right?
But they, yeah, that was, they're still, they're still hot, or too hot.
Okay, again, I think I'll go back to the question that I, that, that I asked earlier. Is, I mean, the county puts out warnings when, when we have a big rainstorm.
Right.
That, that it's, you know, dangerous from, from the runoff. And, and, you know, wait till a couple of tide cycles before you go swimming there. When we, from what you presented, i- unless you're showing that some of those. High bacterial levels were on days in, in the beach area, on the days where there hadn't been storm runoff. Then we don't know whether it's, 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 you know, dangerous or not, and yes, we could say it's dangerous to go out there right after the thunderstorm. And you've just seen all this, you know, muck being washed through, but we don't know when there's been a week of no rain, whether this.
That's a great point, John, and so what I, I, what I will do is go back and get the rainfall data, so we can make that direct comparison. And my guess is, based on the frequency, that it's probably, it's probably not just. Not just um, heavy rain events.
Right.
It may be, it may be rain events, but it may not be, you know, that. It's the, I think it's a, when there's a one inch of rainfall is when the county, you know, does it close all the beaches sort of thing for twenty four hours.
And you had the um, rainfall map there and you showed there really wasn't much rain until September.
Right.
And a lot of these samples were showing elevated um, bacteria counts.
Yeah.
In the earlier parts of the summer.
Yeah.
But I think it would be good to be able to look at the rainfall on those particular dates.
Yeah, I, I was actually, I was working towards that and the monthly was the best I could do uh, for today, but I will uh.
You know, I partly asked that because I've looked at the D E C data that they use for the shellfish closures. And there was ten years of, of, of data testing in various areas, including off Haven's Beach, including the testing by, by Little Northwest Creek. And they, my recollection is that they included data as to what the weather conditions were. And it seemed to me that they were showing a pattern of high bacteria uh, uh. For the Havens Beach area uh, a- around when there had been the rainfall. Little Northwest Creek was a little different, where they had high bacteria levels uh, when, when there hadn't been, 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 you know, been rainfall. Uh, one of the other issues that, again, that, that's relevant here in terms of the swimming and the swimming along the areas where. Sag Harbor Hills, Azure Rest, you know, and Minerva Beach are, is that we've had a diversion. Of, of the outlet of Little Northwest Creek.
Yeah.
Uh, and partly thanks to Fred Thiel here, or mainly thanks to Fred Thiel in getting some funding for it. Uh, but uh, so that instead of a Northwest Creek outlet going along the beach and having traveled. Hundreds of yards to the west from where it originally had been, i- it's been put back to where it had been traditionally for years. Uh, which was on the boundary of, 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 of the village to the, to, to, to the east. And so one of the things we're looking at is whether or not that, that, how well that has worked in mitigating the, the bacteria problem. Uh, you know, around the outlet, which you showed the map there, wh- where the, the center. Of, of the sort of half circle of closure areas was actually, you know, not where the outlet is now, but. I think it's several hundred yards to the, to the east where the outlet was. Two, two or three years ago, uh, so that's a.
And we actually have some data, uh, some before and after data of that that I'm putting together for the uh. I think for the East Hampton Town Trustees, we might have already shared.
Yeah, they did the project actually.
Yeah, 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 so we've already sent it to them, but I mean.
Was, was, that, that was in the, in the presentation you gave, because I'd like, I mean, I'd like to see. Uh, you know, how effective that was, that they'd like to know how, you know, how effective that was.
We sent them the data, but I, I right now can't recall what it shows.
Have you presented to the East Hampton Trustee yet?
Hmm, I think it's the sixteenth of March.
Okay, and one thing that you um. Mentioned was um, with the vaults, the beacon vaults, one coming from the V Villas and then one coming from the south. What, putting your clean water technology hat on, what kind of approach? Could be entertained here other than soaring the whole mess?
Yeah, well, I mean, the one thing that I always think about is that sand is, doesn't remove any nitrogen. But actually does a great job of removing.
Bacteria.
So if you can, you know, then, for example, that's why the, the rules are, you can actually on your own property have a well in your septic system. And they only need to be separated by, I think now it's maybe two hundred feet, but. And the rea- and despite the fact that your well is drawing water, um, and it's because sand is a great filter for pathogens, so. You know, if there's a way for that water to go to ground first, it would prevent, um, it wouldn't prevent the nitrogen, but that in and of itself. To me is, you know, I, I always think about that when it comes to pathogens, like. Sand is a good shape, but you know, you have to, how do you get in a very low lying area? How do you make sure that you have two hundred feet of uh?
Sand.
Yeah.
Or does eelgrass do anything to filter any of the pathogens?
Not really, no, I mean, and, and if anything, you could actually, some of the pathogens might. Grow on the eelgrass, but that's getting a little scientific and esoteric, but uh, yeah. There is a question.
Yes, I saw it, I was gonna say. We have someone from the um, museum Shannon Richards raising a hand, I don't know what.
Please, please speak up.
I doubt it's now appropriate time, good evening folks. Uh, want to thank the Harvard Committee members and always great to see Dr. Gobler. Our appreciation to him, his graduate students and his lab as a whole. Quick question please, and something that I believe um, maybe member Parker had mentioned earlier during the presentation. Specific to the testing at Havens Beach. Um, uh, it seems as though one of the greatest contributing culprits. In terms of the D I, DNA signaling, forgive me if I'm going to say this really bad, I'm going to try to get through it. Um, is dogs and small mammals. So I appreciate the fact dogs are mammals, but we also have small mammals and have observed muskrats or something swimming in the green ooze, so that's kind of cool, you know, the. The new movie for Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles will be muskrat turtles. Um, my question is, is it possible in future samples? To begin to more granularly break out that DNA signal indicator to differentiate canine versus other classifications of. Small mammals. The reason why I ask is because there is the official or unofficial, I'm not quite clear, the designation. But there is that dog run space that is adjacent to that outflow area. Um, and it would be helpful to understand where the small mammal source. Is being pointed to, is it wildlife? Or is it possibly an enhancement of summer community use? Um, and the increased use of dogs in that space, that's also contributing to some of these spikes.
Yeah, it's a good, good point and um. I, you know, frankly, each year we go back and check the state of the science, um, it gets, it's, it's tricky, you actually. To actually know the bacterial primers, you have to get the bacterial. Frankly, I have to poop. For the different animals, and so, you know, there's very reliable ones for dogs, but there's a little bit of overlap with those primers and what you see. Some other uh, small mammals, so, but, you know, there. Ev- every year, new papers come out, so it is possible that we could, I'll look into the, I can look into the builder to find that further. And then that's a very fair point that I had thought about, like, there is dog park, there is the something with lots of. Birds and other mammals, so.
But you, you're also showing a, a, a high level of bacteria at the pipe that enters into the ditch.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, so that you're getting it not, not, not. Not downstream.
Yeah.
But, but upstream, which is the street, you know, it's, it's.
Bay Street.
Et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chris, any thoughts about remedial actions with regard to that sump in Haven's speech or, as I recall, didn't the town do a project, or the village do a project? Like ten years ago on that and?
Well, about twenty years ago, they got a grant to reconstruct the wetlands that had been there originally. And from what I understand, and Kevin McAllister came here and made a presentation to us two or three years ago. And he was there on the ground at that time, he said the money was there and the neighbors just rose up and said, we don't want any mosquito swamp in our backyard and. It just, I, I don't know, that might be really.
They did do a project.
A very mechanical solution, which. It was, it was putting in the, the uh, the Abtec antibacterial sponges.
Yeah.
Which was the project at the end.
Ten years ago?
The ditch.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and those are still there, that they have been replaced at least once, they should have been replaced numerous times apparently.
They do clean them every, at least once a year, I think.
And they rinse them off and it goes right into.
No, they don't rinse them off here, they take them to Columbia Street and they rinse them off and let it go into that wetland, but. Um, I've actually taken samples to your lab and, yeah, it's pretty bad. You know, the stuff, the water that comes out of the um. Out of, and we tried to like say, okay, these are the filters at the beginning of the vault. And we squeeze and sample that, and then we take, you know, the, the filters that are at the uh, distal end. And squeeze that and try to see whether or not there's less bacteria in those. Um, sponges than there were in the ones that were upstream and it, it's just not condensing.
I mean, do, do you have any evidence, is there any scientific reporting on, on whether these are effective? You know, or, or not in terms of whether they really have antibacterial properties other than mechanical filtration?
Yeah, I'm sure they're hardly effective, um, I, otherwise I wouldn't be selling them, I presume.
Well, they're, they're, for the best fund the cost, they're making money off of them, I'll, I'll say.
I, I don't think they're, they're clearly not, they, you know, they're clearly not a fantasy, there's tons of bacteria.
You showed that tonight.
Yeah, yeah, so I do, so Brad, into your question, I, yeah, I, yeah, I hear a wetland, I think is, could be a good one. Um, you know, it's tricky because eventually the water's gonna have to go somewhere, and if it overflows, it's gonna go, go in, but I mean, you know. A direct pipe right onto the beach is, it's uh, it's not.
So what we're.
Said going, something is, you know, keeping that water in is a, um, gotta be a better.
So we were successful in our second effort to get money from New York State to look at the whole watersheds. That come down into Haven's Beach and to look at the gray infrastructure as well as the green infrastructure. And try to look at it holistically, not just try to worry about the water once it gets to Haven's Beach. So are there things we can do up on one fourteen, up in all these, you know, intersecting roads where the runoff comes? Um, can we do things to like, you know, um, stop the water and stop the bacteria, stop the nitrogen before it gets to Havens? So we got that um, grant and um, we're working on, you know. Getting a consultant working on that and trying to tell us how we might be able to mitigate the um, the flow of these pathogens and nitrogen. Onto the beach.
The problem there is it's so low lying, and so you think about like, if there are these, they're all over Ohio and uh. More up island, but some where the runoff just goes into a big area and it's just. Filters through and that probably does a good job. You know, so there may be an opportunity for something like that up.
Upstream.
Would then reduce the total volume of flow.
Right.
Um, that would make sense.
But if, if, wouldn't it be correct that if you just increased? The, the, the volume of water, storm water that could be held for a period of time? I mean, just a big pond, for instance, if you held that water rather than allowing that first flush to go directly, you know, into the, into the bay. You, you, you'd allow, you know, bacteria to, to drop out, uh, other contaminants to, to drop out of it.
Yeah, I'm not so sure they would drop out.
Yeah, they just multiply.
But they just, you know.
I think, I, 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 I don't think they, particularly in warmer weather, I think, I don't think they'd go away and they could. Technically, these bacteria are supposed to only proliferate within the intestines of warm-blooded animals. Um, but I, I have seen some other pathogens where under the right conditions, they actually can grow a little bit in, in water. Particularly in summer, because water temperatures in summer, particularly in places, the sun are getting close to body temperature here, you almost approach thirty degrees, so. Anyway.
But I, I'm not sure I understood that, are you saying that the bacteria would not die off over, over time if it was held like? You know, in a.
I don't think so, I think, I think, in, in particularly in summer, I think they would stick around, you know.
There is a question in the back of the room here.
Uh, it's in the room?
Yeah, in the room, the man at the back of the room.
Hi, thank you, yes, Michael, I am silly, I'm a legislative representative office, uh, thank you, Dr. Gobler for this presentation. Very informative and obviously very important. Um, question about your testing, did you happen to test any sort of uh, of sediment, sand or rocks? Um, and if not, do you think that's a good idea to consider? Um, especially given the fact, obviously, we're concerned about uh, folks going into the water. But what about residents who may bring their animals to the beach, walk on the beach, animals often pick up rocks, maybe they chew seaweeds. That could have some of the fecal bacteria on them, is that something that you consider, um, can that bacteria actually remain on those materials?
Yeah, I think, I think it's possible, I haven't really given that a lot of thought, not a lot of know about it. I wouldn't worry much about this, the most of the sediment there were just, if the concerns bacteria, you know, it's mostly sand and coarse grains. So there shouldn't be a lot of attention to bacteria there.
Not in terms of like a shift in the tide, you know, when it recedes.
Yeah.
That should remain and could that impact to help and.
Yeah, I mean, it should, on the tide, it should get flushed out, seaweed question is interesting one, uh. And we haven't looked at that, so, yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your question.
I have two hands, um, both you wanted.
Okay, go ahead, you can see them.
Yeah, Shannon Richards and Wes.
I'm happy to wait because you answered one of my questions, so the other person, if they're available, just two to go. Okay, I'll answer my question, I'll ask my question real quick. Um, Dr. Gobler, a quick question for you, please, I'm wondering if in future studies, it would be possible to. Consider adding another testing site, in, in particular, out in the. Um, relatively recent, last past couple of years, mooring sites that now exist in the middle of the bay. Um, south of the Red Spindle and east of the Breakwater. I ask this because. Um, I have the benefit of being a, a member of the Azure Rest community, um, my family's had a home there since the. Uh, late forties. Um, and so I've interacted with the bay quite a bit in the course, over the course of my life, particularly in the summertime. Uh, last year, I was doing an awful lot of kayaking in the middle of the bay, uh, chasing a loop of fish. And what I noticed is I appreciate the features and the services of the pump out boat. Um, I think that's extraordinary, but a good number of boats are spending all of their summer in our mooring field. And while they may be pumped down into their septic system, their villagers are running constantly. And I regretfully didn't do a very good job of documenting this on my phone, but I think we can all, uh, uh, understand with those marinas. Very often, these idle boats pick up water from rain, from spillage, from whatever, and these villagers just kind of trickle, trickle, trickle. And continue to add that content, whether it's hydrofluorocarbons from oils and petroleums and. Whatnots, um, and all other things into the water. I'm wondering. Is there another problem that's contributing to the bay that may be masked because one, we're not testing out there? These boats don't have booms around them like an oil slick, and because of the higher volume of water and the tidal effect. Uh, maybe it's being mitigated then, but I wonder what your thoughts are on, is there potentially a problem that existed given the high use? Of water of boat moorings out there that we're just not simply looking at yet?
So we have looked at that in the past and prior years, and there was, has been some indication that. And not just here in Sag Harbor, I've seen this in East Hampton as well, that, that, yeah, you can't, that when you're around boats and summer, there can be. You can get a fecal bacterial signal and it's a human one, so uh, you know where it's coming from there. Um, yeah, and so we could look at that further, um, you know, I think. I need to. Brainstorm on what the next sampling steps are, but we have done a little bit within the harbor. We have done some sampling there, we have seen human bacterial sources. And one of the reasons we evolve further is I think that those waters aren't used for swimming and aren't used for shellfish. Yeah.
I have one more question.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, hi, Mary Ann and, and the committee, I want to just thank you for, for this, this scientific study, I think it's fantastic that, that. Uh, we really are trying to get the heart of what's going on. Um, my name is Wes Fry, uh, it just a, a kind of a, maybe a simple question, and forgive me if someone maybe touched on this earlier. But this is maybe more, actually, it might be more a, a question for Mr. Thiel. I'm just wondering, kind of now that we know there are pathogens in the water. Do we need to put up signage that's very discreet around, say, Windmill Beach, Havens Beach that says, no swimming allowed? Unsafe water, um, I'm just thinking about liability to the village at this point. While we try to figure out a mitigation technique in the long run.
Really, Suffolk County Health Department question because. You know, that, that's their regulation as far as that even, uh, sorry, I, I think the villagers have to do that in consultation. With the health department, but, you know, I have to give it more thought.
Well, um. We designed signs that we were going to put out at Havens, one sign at Havens, one at Windmill. One somewhere else, I forget right now, and they had QR codes and one of the QR codes would take. The person to the most recent um, Gobler study. Another one was going to take you to Surf Rider, which also monitors our waters. Um, they monitored for Entrocaucus, which is the bacteria you're most concerned about for swimming. And it was also going to put the Suffolk County um, hotline, um, a QR code to their website, but also their hotline number. Which if you call it, it tells you which beaches are closed and um. Uh, it just didn't meet with approval, that kind of signage on the beach, but um, we would certainly like to revisit that. Cause I think it, it is important, uh, Windmill Beach, I think it'd be a really good idea. Um, and Havens as well. Um, and Havens as well after this study because we never really sampled. The beach beach, the swimming beach, we've always stuck to the sump side where, except for sailors like myself with those little JY fifteen's. Not that many people swim there. Their people are all swimming, you know, further to the west and we did look at that and it was like. You said forty-four percent of the samples were over the threshold. So um, I think we need to revisit and urge our trustees to say yes to putting some signage there. They were really adorable signs. Really adorable signs.
That's a really good idea because I test for uh, Surf Rider at the Northwest Creek and we do it weekly. And in the summertime and that's really good information and people are asking, uh, what's the water like in it? And I think what Mary Ann's talking about is.
We had our little Northwest Creek sign, that's the other one.
Yeah, I mean, they have a lot of signs about property, private property, trespassing, et cetera, so it seems that. Prior to that, it would be, uh, so that's something we should discuss. Can I ask you about your funding? What's the largest source of your funding for your testing?
Um, well, I mean, this study is, it's, it's all funded via, um, well, actually, Mary Ann would have to answer for this particular setting.
Well, for this particular one, the village contributed about twenty-five percent. Um, we got a contribution as we have every year from Southampton Town, another one from Ann Welker sitting back there, the Southampton trustees. Um, and the East Hampton trustees have also chipped in, but then it's a lot of private donations. And it's people that are sitting in this room, people that are online, people that are interested in water quality and. Some people can contribute a considerable amount of money and I'm very grateful for it. But it's like, I'm out there with a begging bowl for about four months a year.
Dr. Goldblum, but actually for the last four years or so, I've been on a committee for the village to e- expand uh, the uh. Service area for the sewage treatment plant and, and, and right now, only about thirteen percent of the village. Is, is, is on the sewage treatment plant, mainly the, the commercial district and, and we're trying to expand it. Using the excess, excess capacity of the plant, which is approximately a hundred thousand gallons a day. Uh, to get us up to forty, fifty percent of the, of the, of the village poss- possibly at some point. Um, but we're doing shorter, smaller steps to get to twenty percent, twenty-five percent, et cetera. Um, and. Some of the things that you're presenting are, are questions that, that sort of we're looking at in terms of, and the key question is. All right, if you wanted to have the most impact, you know, where would you sewer? Um, and the, the current plans of in the area around the sewage treatment plant, some of which is not sewered, so we're, we're, we're taking care of that and we already have. Uh, have, have, have some of the money at least to, to, to do that. But most of the searing is, is gonna, is going to uh, be to the. I would say west of, of Main Street to the Cove, extending the pipe out. Main Street to Otter Pond, uh, and, and going again to the west. Of, of, of Main Street to those areas, and most of those are low lining areas and I think in, in the areas that you're talking about, about the Beacon Out fill. Fill and everything behind Main Street where those are really low areas and it might be, be a problem to take care of with IA systems, et cetera, because of the high groundwater. So, uh, I, I mean, what we'd like to have, your concurrence, basically, and I wish I had a map to hand you and I have it in the car and I didn't bring it with me. Uh, but to show you, here, here's, here's what we're proposing. Does that look reasonable based upon your testing?
I mean, it's, I think it does. Like I said, the area that it needs the most is that, you know, the, the upper Cove and then around Otter Pond, so I think that. You know, the more of that you can address, the better. And so I think that's, that's uh. That's what I would, so I think you're on, right on track.
And if I sent you a map, could you just like say, yeah, this looks decent in terms of areas?
But that, I mean, that's exactly the area that needs the most, because that, that water's the most active.
The, the, the other, the, the other question which will, which is related to that. Is it would seem that if we did those areas, most of the groundwater flow with the nitrogen would be going to the, to the Cove. Uh, so that we really wouldn't be mitigating much of the problem in the bay as a whole. And, and all the, the, the water quality in the, in the bay is, is better than it is in the Cove. We still know we have problems with, with, you know, the eel grass disappeared roughly around twenty fourteen. It was in a two-year period, it went from being fairly lush to, to, to none. You know, with that, we lost scallops, we lost a lot of other, we lost habitat for a lot of other, more, more rain life. Uh, so, I mean, some people have asked or may, well, if we just do the area over toward the Cove. Are we really gonna help the area toward the, toward the bay? Uh, and another question has been, and I just had this in a meeting with some, uh, village meeting last Friday. Uh, as to whether the problem in the bay i- is really the nitrogen from septic systems. In the groundwater or is it mainly, you know, runoff, for instance, the runoff at Havens Beach? So I don't know whether you can address that.
Yeah, I mean, I always, runoff is usually a strong source of bacteria. As shown, but usually not a strong, big, volumetrically impactful source of nitrogen. And so if the concern is like eel grass. Loss of eel grass, that's usually linked to nitrogen. I, I, I'd wanna look at exactly where the eel grass loss was, has been. Or had, where that was before and where, where you lost it from.
Basically everywhere and none, but then.
Yeah, yeah, but it's probably the appearance that had it so that it could better, because the, and the other. Uh, overarching theme here that we didn't touch on today is temperature changes.
Right.
Showed very high temperatures back in the Cove, but the eel grasses and scallops are both temperature sensitive, so um. Uh, and we're in a warming era, you know, it's warmed down. It's three degrees, two degrees, two to three degrees Celsius since the year two thousand, in summer. Uh, and that's so a lot, frankly, as much as we were expecting for the whole century of the plants, so um. Um, and I wanna see exactly where it was to get a sense of the relative role of the nitrogen versus temperature may have played.
But, but if, if you had to sum up in terms of what, and I, by the way, I've seen this one of your previous reports. Where, where you did, where he did say that the main problem was nitrogen for the, you know, for the whole area. And I think even though you're, you, you had some concentration in your last two reports on bacteria. I, I'm assuming your, your conclusion is the main problem to water quality, including in the bay. I, i- and the Cove is, is nitrogen rather than bacteria.
I mean, it depends what you wanna use the waters for, frankly, I don't, I don't wanna like be, you know, so precise, but. You know, back in the Cove, the nitrogen is leading to the harmful balloons, that's leading to the low oxygen, that's probably driving away marine life, but. You know, maybe some people don't care about any of those things, they just wanna swim, in which case it's the runoff. So I think, you know, really depends on the site specific and it depends on what you're, you know, you're interested in fishing, shellfishing, swimming, um, habitat. Maritime, uh, tradition, you know, all these things are on offer, so it's a little bit of a personalized answer and location specific, sorry.
I, I, one more, I, I don't know whether this is your, your field or not, basically, but if you look at the map of the Cove. And the areas that you were, you were talking about, there, there was an opening. A bigger opening, I think there's still a little opening from the. Cove out to Noiac Bay. Um, there's a culvert, I don't know, is it still, is it still open?
No, I don't think it goes to Noiac Bay, it goes to that estuary.
Right, which, which filters into the bay.
Well, but there, there, there used to, it, it used to be open from the. And, and if you look, looking at the map, the, the upper part of that, where, where, where the Cove goes back to uh. Uh, it almost comes to Noiac Bay. Uh, there's been questions, it used to be open there under the road. The, the questions about opening up and whether that would have an effect on the Cove if it was done. And especially whether it would help in the upper Cove, which seems to be the most problematic area. You know, my take on it is, is, is you might be making it worse in the upper Cove. Because you would take away some of the tidal flow into the upper Cove.
Right.
Uh, I, I don't know whether you.
Yeah, I think in that case, you wanna be real careful.
Right.
And um, and I wouldn't even try to predict what would happen. Yeah, I think you, you'd need someone to do a serious hydrological. Hydrodynamic study, um, because there's, you know, Long Island is, is wrong with histories of people thinking, oh, well, let us open this up here and then it'll have.
Right.
The irony is that that study was never made when they closed it off.
Yeah.
So they closed it off and it became a cul-de-sac and it's, and it's a dying body of water. And whether we could retro, you know, whether we could go back to what, the way it was. Um, that's, that's a huge, that's a huge lift.
Sure that there was an opening all the way to Noiac Bay, we can have another discussion about that. But we did talk to Larry Swanson, who was the previous, what, Assistant Dean of this.
Yeah.
You know, school of marine atmospheric sciences and he came out here and. Um, and he and his gang of hydrologists looked at it because we were saying, you know, we just, we were afraid of unintended consequences.
Yeah.
And so he told us it would be like seventy-five thousand dollars to do um, sort of a preamble of what a study would be. And that just ended the conversation, you know, but you know, they um, you know, there are people that can do that.
You definitely appreciate the flushing right there, but the rest of the system, it's hard to know, you could, but. We, I don't wanna make this much longer, but you could have, you could have just having like great flow from. You know, Noiac Bay through the, the pot, the, right to where the, it's the harbor is and then the, isolate the whole lot of parts you get.
That's what I've always worried about, yeah.
Or, or not, you, you need to, anyway.
I have a question, really mentioned, the missing harbor committee member mentioned it once, the Y valves on boats, the harbor master had. Gone to boats randomly and I think thirty boats were entered and eighteen or something had opened Y valves, I don't know much about.
Oh, I don't think so.
I think so.
It was a large number.
That's.
Um, so I mean, is that, do we get reports, do we know?
We do, the reports to the Village Board of Trustees and it's part of the, their packet and you can look at it. I, years ago, in one of my hopeless projects, I tried to get him to put it on a spreadsheet. So that we could have those results and, and look at them, but they keep them by hand and they were not moved.
No, actually, it, in some areas, uh, you can't get your boat uh, to a mooring uh, before, in, in uh. Many places before a harbor launch comes up and checks your Y valve. Um, Block Island, case in point, here it's not as rigorous, I think the harbor master has made. An effort last year, I think Mary Ann's point would be excellent to have, everything's digitized, we can digitize this and somebody spoke. Online, people do swim out there, there was a water skiing, there are several water skiing businesses that people. All summer long are water skiing until the sun has set, um, in, adjacent to the mooring field and. I, I think it's incumbent upon us, uh, stewards of the water to enforce in any way we can and a Y valve. Is a real easy thing to try.
Right, but a lot of the big boats out there, they have their own water.
Yeah, it's not the big boats, it's the little guys.
It's the little guys, so thirty-five, forty, fifty footers.
They're still not allowed to discharge.
No, but the, what do you mean, the ones with their.
Doesn't matter whether they have a water system on or not, they're not allowed to discharge, so no discharge though.
Right.
Which means no discharge.
But they have a, they have a sewage treatment plant on those boats, they're not like a little thirty-foot boat that has an eight-gallon holding tank that. Fouls up very quickly.
I understand it, but they're still not allowed to discharge.
Right.
We understand, John.
I mean, it, well, I, but, but what, I, the reason I'm making that point is. Since some people, including the harbor master, believe they're allowed to discharge and they're not. It's, you know, it's clear law that, that, that no matter what their system is. This is a no discharge area, including boats that may have certain treatment systems on them.
One of the point before we close quickly, uh, I spent a lot of time in Savannah, they have dog walking vaults in the street, you know, you put your poop in the vault, the dog's poop. Um, and we don't really have anything like that in Tech Harbor and maybe we should consider along the vein of some, some clever signage. Of installing some of the little beach poop bag things with.
Well, there are over at the dog walk.
But I mean, maybe just on a, I don't know, just saying that maybe it would be a good thing. Whatever the source of this bacteria is, we should consider where people walk their dogs and make sure there are stations available for them to dispose of the waste.
Well, that's a good idea because you, you, you're getting sourced from the runoff that comes off the street.
And you raise awareness.
Uh, Dr. Goldblum, would you ever be able to um. Uh, join up with what John Parker is working on with the expansion of the sewage treatment? Just to put your imprimatur on what, it, it seems like it's a, a no-brainer and I think it's going in that direction. That would be great if maybe you can arrange that in some way, not, not a huge commitment of time, but just to look at it and to. Apply because we're spending a lot of money just to analyze it and eventually, and it would be a shame to, like we did with the. Havens system, I think that was a huge waste of money and the retrofit was also a huge waste of money.
So the first step in the, with the sewer system is to take the map that John has that we all have. And then take what's gonna be in the report, which is the sampling sites. And where we can see where we've had high bacteria and especially like the Beacon One and Beacon Two. They are definitely right there in the sweet spot of where we hope to expand the source, um, the sewer service area. So I think that there's a, a good, um.
No, I'll send you a proposed map of, of, of the area. I think I've got another meeting on at eight o'clock in the morning.
Is it, is that, is there anybody else on the line that has questions?
No.
Dr. Goldblum.
Okay.
Yeah, it's uh, always much appreciated.
Can I just ask one last question about Dr. Goldblum's new system?
Certainly.
Has he gone, you're gonna promote that in some way? Salute the new system, once it gets approved by someone?
Um, yes, yeah, I mean, it should be approved this month and then we're gonna. Uh, you know, as scientists and not business, uh, people were figuring out how best to get it out there, like I said, we do have this one individual. Wants to form a business around it and uh, there are two installers that we've, uh, A and A, who are training and X has.
Oh no, you should see what Aiden did, it's beautiful. And, and, well, I just said, we have too many signs already.
Yes, yeah.
Oh yeah, I had, everything I said didn't, no, I just stopped talking.
I'm sure on our website.
Dr. Goldblum, I'll ask you one more question related, quickly in relation to this.
Yeah.
It seems to me the problem with the IA systems is, is not the systems themselves. Uh, but the slow rate of conversion to IA systems. But you, as, as part of looking at the, the sewage treatment plant expansion areas, we, we looked at where IA systems have been put in the village. Uh, and, and also where they've been approved and not yet, you know, put in. The number I think is sixty-five total, to- total approved and in, in the ground. And that's over roughly four years. And, and at that rate, I calculated it'd take about a hundred years to do the whole, to do the whole village. Um, and, and you, you're not at that rate gonna have any significant, you know, im- impact, I mean, if you do a ten or twelve, you know, a, a year base, basically. Can you, and, is there any hope? And, 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 and maybe Fred Thiel can answer this to me, being a politician.
And that would be my question.
We're gonna get any, any changes in the, in the, in the laws or regulations or, 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 or something else? To speed up that level of conversion, uh, because it's not having any significant, the numbers are not gonna have any significant impact on water quality. Uh, uh, unless, you know, they go way up.
You know, I mean, Fred can answer, the only, the only thing I would say is that this Suffolk County Subwatersheds Plan. Phase two is from now through twenty fifty and they're looking to have two hundred thousand, over two hundred thousand systems upgraded in Suffolk County by twenty fifty. So, and there's, you know, it's all mapped out how to do it, but it's, you know, it's funding and it's also.
And that's my cue, I think, so, I, I mean, you know, as far as maintaining, I mean, the village has their law, they, they certainly could revisit. When they wanna require, uh, but you know, it, but what Dr. Goldblum talked about is it, it ultimately comes down to money and most of the. Uh, kind of convergence to IA systems have been basically financed in one of two ways, either through. You know, the rebates through either, on the east end through the Community Preservation Fund, Water Quality, or through the county, which has been. Mostly funded through the state, we have a Water Quality Infrastructure Act, where we've been putting five hundred million dollars a year in. For all water infrastructure and there's been, you know, an appropriation out of that. Uh, for IA systems, which the county of Suffolk, it's the overwhelming portion of it in this, in, in the state. But you know, that yields the level that you're talking about, which is pretty low, so. You know, one of the things that's in, you know, that's being discussed as part of this year's state budget is that, you know, the. Uh, the county has a proposal for recurring, you gotta have a recurring revenue source to pay for this year after year after year. And you know, the county has a proposal that they've submitted to the governor. Which the governor only put a portion of into her budget, which, which, you know, uh, just didn't include the, the funding part. The talk is, is about increasing the, some mandatory referendum, increasing the sales tax. just didn't include the, the funding part. The talk is, is about increasing the, some mandatory referendum, increasing the sales tax in the county by an eighth of percent and utilizing those revenues. The proposal would be seventy five percent of it goes to IA systems. The remainder would go for other, you know, sewage treatment infrastructure, like sewage treatment plants.
Right.
So that's going to be all on, on the agenda. It's going to be on, you know, on the part of the discussions for this year's budget as to whether or not Suffolk will get that authority. Because that, you know, it, it's what it boils down to is you gotta have the, you know, you can have the regulation, but then you have to have the money to incentivize people to do it also. And, you know, that, that's the next step is this act, the special act that the county of Suffolk wants from.
Well, I think one thing that's happened and we don't really see the effect percolate through the numbers, I don't think, is the fact that the IRS, you know, through Chuck Schumer, suddenly these rebates are taxable.
Yeah, they should have never been.
Never should have been taxable.
That's another map. But, you know, that was a disincentive to doing this. The other thing that we're considering in Albany also, I made a pitch for this in the budget, is that the, the grants are not taxable for income tax purposes, but we actually, the, the county and the state incentivizes through grants. And then when you go to buy these systems, they're subject to sales tax. So we'd like to exempt them from sales tax also.
Oh, yeah. That would be good. It would be good.
So we're working on that also.
And I think there's an interesting model that's happening around Georgia Pond. Because there's a number of homes that are right there on the pond. It's a very problematic water body. And they have now hired somebody to just work with homeowners, somebody from the Center for Clean Water Technology. And I think that's just great. Person will do outreach, you know, hold your hand, fill out the forms. I'm not sure exactly what, but I think it's sort of an A to Z concierge for the IA system. And that's kind of, you know, what it takes. I'm trying to do it myself and it's a real pain. It, well, it's not a real pain. It's just another thing to do, you know?
People are busy.
People are busy.
The watersheds managers that help.
You gotta staff these programs up. So, I mean, you gotta, you know, I, my office gets calls from time to time. People get really frustrated with the process of, of getting the rebate and all of that, you know, so that really needs to be streamlined. And you have to have enough. If, if you're going to go from doing twelve a year, you know, in the village or whatever the county, I think maybe the county did like a thousand maybe last year.
Yeah.
You know, if you, if you need to do two hundred thousand, you need a lot more staff to, to process all this stuff.
And also variances. People will need to bypass that part zoning.
Tree wraps and stuff.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Goldler. Thank you very much. Okay, back to applications. Back to the fun stuff. So here we are. So we're going to talk about Sound View? We, we should, the first one, actually, the next one is Pumpkin Farders. We should probably just make a motion. Oh, right. It's on April sixth. Okay, do I hear a motion for that? All those in favor? So move. So what we're doing is tabling the.
Twenty two on Pumpkin.
Twenty two on Pines, until April sixth.
Yes. The next meeting for the record is April sixth.
Yeah. Let me say hi to Anne. Doris? Is any, is anybody online for eighteen sound view?
Yeah, so.
Okay. There's, there's nobody here.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Hey, James, how we, how we doing today? I was reading a copy of the, of the, of the, of the.
We had that at the last meeting.
I thought, I, I.
Who's left in eighteen sound view?
Uh, well, they were going to advise materials, but they don't, um, and we can talk tonight about whether the board's comfortable with the, the comments that I'm going to have.
Okay. They, they, the written CBA decision, we had that at the last.
Oh, we had, okay. I, I know there was one a German to get that.
Yeah, that's why we, that's where we actually heard them last time.
Yeah, it was a German for a while, but.
I know, I still love your calls. All right. We'll give you a call on the weekend, Saturday, Sunday. I, I enjoy, I enjoy it on the weekend, right? Okay, yeah. Yeah, that's right.
There's actually. She's a Southampton trustee now running for Bridget Fund.
Yeah, what a great, she wants to go relax, huh?
Ready for something new.
Well, you know, I don't blame her.
It's not so much fun when you're
Maybe she's gonna take our.
Kind of like.
Jump the way to you. Getting close. But I, I think, you know, Bridget's got a son in college age, you know? So she's got, yeah. Good for her. She had a good opportunity. I'll just leave it at that.
Oh, interesting.
She has a good opportunity. Yeah, a good opportunity to find a second. Good.
Good for her.
Good.
All right. Do we have a meeting going on here, Will?
We do, yes.
Yep.
Yes. We opened the hearing, I think we have on Zoom, we have.
Oh.
Yeah.
Advocate. Please proceed. We'll just open the hearing first.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to open this to eighteen sound view.
So it's continued.
Public hearing.
Right, right.
Yeah, we don't need a motion.
In motion to what?
Why should we? Don't need.
No, right. So can you introduce?
Can you hear? Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, hi, I'm Dan Hall from Land Use Ecological Services. Will Shapiro was unable to stay on for the meeting, so I'm going to handle it for the owner. We, at the last meeting, we spoke about some items that were still remaining comments that I think we addressed regarding the planting buffer plan, which we provided a new one. And the main item that came up was a question about the areas. I wanted to make sure that the fifty foot buffer area was going to be accounted for in the total planting area because there are some existing structures within that buffer area that cannot be planted. So we accomplished that by expanding the buffer area landward. And those areas are indicated on the plan now. The non-planted buffer area because of the pathways and the structures is approximately one thousand square feet. And the additional planting area that we're going to make up for that is approximately one thousand one hundred and ten square feet, which is additional one hundred and ten square feet of buffer area. And we also revised some of the species, all the species.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to share.
Okay.
All the species that are now indicated are on the Sag Harbor native planting list for suitable species. And one thing to note that was brought up by the Architectural Review Board was for some shady or blocking from the neighbors' properties. So on the east side, there's already some existing conifers, existing evergreen trees that block it. So on the west side, we proposed some red seeders, uh, five approximately that would hopefully address their concerns and providing some blockage for, you know, the, the neighbor's views, which is not not a problem. And then we also got comments from environmental consultant for the village about accessing the property. And we provided that information from the contractor, Patrick Pools. He gave a construction description. And with that description, photograph, which showed access would be on the west sided existing house. There's a pathway that exists from the driveway. There is. And I also provided to the board the photographs again that were originally submitted, just to refresh them with the existing conditions at the site. I didn't know. As far as what's going to be removed, as far as you're going to remove the existing non-native landscaping, which includes some private hedges and some dwarf Alberta spruces that will be totally removed so that when the project's planted, it'll be totally native vegetation encompassing the area. And a question come up about the existing vegetation on the bluff and whether it was native or any invasive species. And that's why I submitted the photographs because I think there, it's all native species there. It's mostly beach grass, some cherry, wild black cherries and very well established. So I didn't know if there were any questions specifically the board had or the consultant for the village had any additional comments or concerns.
Good detective.
I have some questions. I, I walk along that beach every day and I noticed that the steps that go out to the beach have a couple of things, one of which is that they're painted black. And that happened recently, which is kind of counter to what we are asking for these days. The second thing is that there's some, there's some electrical, either conduit or a water line that's exposed to the west side of the steps. And we need to know what's going on there because a couple of neighbors have put outdoor showers there. And I don't know that those are allowed. We've never, I think, approved those. But it's a small thing, but since we're dealing with, this, this staircase seems like it's expanded scale wise, much more than that you have on your, on your drawings. And if it's a small thing, but all, this is the public face of this house. If there's a way to, the, the steps are not like, say, six and twelve, they're six and about eighteen. So you could shorten that last little bit of staircase going out to the beach. If it was just a couple of feet, it would make a difference.
That's going to be erosion.
Yeah, I think probably the beach might have been at a higher elevation when we built them originally. And now they're exposed more. Might build up and come back again. I'm not sure about that. The application was for pool. Everything else was already existing at the site, but I do understand your question.
Yeah, it's, it's recent construction, but it, you know, the, these are things that you need to look at. There's some exposed PVC. It's either conduit or it's plumbing. And that shouldn't be there. So walking along the beach there, you see several things. There was a shower to your west that was frozen and water was shooting out of a shower for three or four days, et cetera. So I don't know if this is plumbing or electrical, but it needs to be addressed. And whatever it is, it needs to be buried.
Well, I don't know. Are they supposed to have?
If it's electric, if it's lighting, maybe, I don't know that, you know, it's approved.
What was, what was the diameter of the pipe about?
Inch. It's black PVC.
Okay.
I really don't know, you know, what it is. It's a minor thing, but it's there.
And I, I don't know what that is, so I'd investigate it, but.
It's, it's just below the permit. If you look at your permit, it's, it's right there. And it would just be, it's, like I say, it's a minor detail, but we need to address that. You need to address that.
And I haven't been there since, you know, a few months ago when we first started having this conversation. And I'd never noticed those stairs before. And I think those stairs are problematic. What kind of beach access do we allow for stairs like that?
Well, no, I think historically you had access to the beach. That's a fine thing, but it looks like it was, it's, it's certainly further than the survey and it needs to be looked at. We're looking at plants. We're looking at feet and inches. That's a, that's a problem there. And it, along the beach, there's examples, like I say, of outdoor showers, of expanding decks on the beach. That is not something that we approve.
Right. But I don't think there's any shower, anything that on the beach. There's a shower that's existing that they, up near the cottage.
Yeah.
That's a good place.
Yeah, just if you could take a look at it. This is, there's electrical. This broke off. I suspect it's electrical, but why, why the hell is it doing that here?
Yeah, I, I mean, we're, we're looking at pictures of the, right next to the steps where it looks like there's an electrical conduit. And basically, now asking, you know, what, what, you know, what that is. I think there's also a drain, looks like a drainage PVC.
No, it's a landscape light and the head has been broken off.
Okay.
And it's hardwired.
I thought it was a shower.
Yeah, it's hardwired.
Okay, that's, oh, that's part of what, what the electrical hooked up.
And I suspect it's electrical, but it shouldn't be going down any further north than that one electrical fixture, certainly. And if, it, it needs to be addressed. So it's broken off. It's a marine environment. It's.
Okay, they could certainly remove it. It sounds like it's definitely not functional at all anyway, so.
It'd be appreciated.
And what would you like them to do about the stairs?
So you. Yeah, the stairs, if you look at the stairs, the, the last several risers are, let's say, seven and eighteen, and it could be seven and twelve and be completely functional, doing exactly what they need to do. Seven and eighteen puts that thing further, right up to the high tide mark and then some. So you could move it back a couple of feet and it would be a beautiful thing.
All right, cut back.
I would say cut it back two feet. Yeah.
Okay. Mo, is it safe for them to access? I don't see it being a problem.
No, no, no. I, I completely concur that you need access. You've had access. That makes complete sense. But like I say, if you walk along a beach, there's various houses that have like this, a little bit of creeping structure going on to the bay. And we, we would appreciate it if you would address that.
Okay.
How do you feel about the color being black?
Black is not something that is a beautiful thing for Steph when we're telling everybody that they have to have steps that are semi-transparent. I don't even know what the material is that allows.
Translucent, the.
So yeah, it would be an open great technical material to allow light penetration to promote growth of vegetation under the staircase if possible.
And what you, what you have here is pressure treated southern pine. And I think that the pressure treated today is not like Cooperon or whatnot, but it's it's, it's not a great thing for the environment. If you can move that back a couple of feet, talk to your contractor and see if that can be done.
And I, I think that whatever you said in terms of the material, it would be good to have like this translucent material so that the, the the plantings below it can survive. Because if they don't, you're going to end up having an eroding situation because they will die. And then you get a big storm and you're going to get washed out and there's going to be a problem. So I think what you want to do is approach that stairway with every intention of trying to foster the development and the continued growth of the, whatever it is, what.
Do you have a spec at all for a tread that you could pass on?
No, I'm familiar with that. Open great deck and use it for docks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be good.
This was an issue, this project till tonight, which is fine, but that's okay.
Thank you.
So just a point of clarification on that. Are you suggesting just the bottom couple risers to be treaded with the open great?
No, I think the entire piece should be. I mean, it's, it's made out of pressure treated pine, which may or may not be a good thing, but when you paint it black, you're creating all kinds of issues which we're trying to get away from.
Right.
And it certainly doesn't look like a natural staircase going up to the house.
And any kind of docks that we have, we have all of them. Tell me what the material is. You know, where it has to be translucent and has to be able to be open to the sunlight for the, the plant material below it.
So the most accepted manufacturer is through flow.
Through flow.
It's open great tacking material. We do see it on staircases and it's highly effective. The, the, the question is just, you know, I don't, I'm not familiar with how big the staircase is. I haven't been to the site. The staircase does not even show up on.
Here, Brent, you got a picture here.
Yeah, what I was just going to say is if the staircase doesn't even show up on the photographs that that the applicant's agent has submitted. So perhaps it would be helpful to have site photographs with that staircase in the record as well.
I don't know whether that's, is, 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 is the staircase, is it new or is part of it new or partly rebuilt or was it just painted?
I have no idea. We were proposing a pool. I wasn't really focusing on the staircase at all till tonight.
Okay, you know, it's, it's a small item, but like I say, these things creep up on you and all of a sudden we have these pre-existing non-conforming conditions and then they get to stay that way and that's not a good thing. So while you're applying for the pool, etc., which we've essentially approved, this is an item that's popped up and needs to be addressed. So if you have a through-flow decking, if you could remove two feet of this guy, pull it back towards the house, you're not going to change the, the access to the beach at all and it'll make it a nicer gesture towards the public which walks along there.
No, I understand. Yeah, you don't want to impede on the public.
So the board doesn't have any further comments. I can offer some based upon review of the materials that were most recently submitted. Did you recognize that Chick had given some recommendations to the applicant? And that they did submit some materials to try to respond to those. And I will say that the planting plan that has been submitted does now accurately represent all native materials that are appropriate for its site. That being said, there are a few, I mean, just items that could be addressed as part of this application for clarity on the record and consistency in the plans. Looking at the survey compared to the planting plan, it would be helpful for us to understand what exactly is to be removed in, within the newly established buffer area. We have on the survey showing a cottage with mainly adjacent to it a patio, but on the planting plan, there is no patio or there's no patio shown. And we see some revegetation being closed within that area of what would be a patio. So if the patio is to remain, I think the planting plan needs to be updated if the patio is to be removed. I think that's an update to the survey just to show that the patio should, is to.
At the last meeting, Chick had asked for additional planting in that area. And it's just, it's not really, it's a patio per se. It's like open, like pavers spaced out. Like I guess foot and a half by foot and a half pavers, squares, blocks put in the ground. That can be removed, just picked up and removed. So it's not a patio per se, as you might expect off the back of a house. It's more like a, an area that's it's, 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 it's more of like a terrace area that's, that's flat and I mean, it's not much of a structure is what I'm getting at. It's just, it's just open, some, some placement of some pavers that they're squares. They're like foot and a half squares.
That seems to be very manageable. So I would just recommend that the survey be updated to show that patio to be removed. Because it does not specify on the survey that it is to be removed. That's again, a point of clarification.
Is the patio, excuse me, a concrete slab?
No, that's what I'm saying. It's not, it's not at all. It's just, it's actually grass going in between the, it's a, it's like a, something you get at Home Depot or one of those stores. It's a foot and a half by foot and a half square that has spaces in between them and they have grass.
But that's still essentially a concrete patio.
Whatever it is, it's shown.
Label patio on the, on the survey, so I guess that's.
Yes, it's just a note on the screen.
Yeah.
But even if it's like these concrete pavers with grass growing in between it, it's still pounces pervious surface, right? Servius square footage.
And they're removing it and so it just needs to be shown on the survey as to be removed.
You're removing that? I'm sorry, I missed a beat there. You're moving, you're removing or you're replacing it with concrete pavers or?
No, we're removing it.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
Wasn't any structures other than full patio.
Okay.
Removing lots of area for, to include for the buffer. So, you know, backyard area and the patio is essentially being removed.
That, I think that's an easy survey update, just for clarity. And then in regards to the fencing, there's a lot of fencing shown on the survey between the newly proposed buffer area. Is it the intention that the fencing would remain? And if so, are you going to plant around it? Because you have some shrubbery.
Fences going to buffers.
I wanted to just make sure that the shrubbery will be able to be planted with, you know, with the fencing in place.
We don't usually have fences going through buffers.
Exactly. Normally the fencing is removed from the buffer, but I don't know what you discussed with the applicant prior here on this app.
Did you talk to this applicant last month?
That's, that's listed as, as, as being the pool fence. Is that correct?
Yes, but whole fence, the whole fence could be moved outside of the buffer.
Right.
I understand that. I'm just saying that it's, that's the fence we're talking about is.
It just says wire fence. There's a lot of them in, in the area between the pool and the top of the bluff. There is a, a series of vents.
It's all beds. We could simply put a, no, in the buffer area to be removed.
Yeah, I'd say to show the fencing is to be removed and then show where the proposed fencing is outside of the buffer or your pool barrier compliance.
Yeah, we show that. That's already shown around the edge of the patio area, the compliance, the wire, the chain link fence for the pool enclosure.
Yep, there it is.
Oh yeah, I see it. Yeah, I'm sorry. I missed that. Okay, so I think if they're proposing that around the pool, then they would meet their.
Could take the rest of it out.
Yeah, then the rest of the fence goes away.
Yeah, if they wanted to put a fence outside of the buffer, that's fine. All right. You know, the harbor committee has allowed that before.
But not in the buffer.
In the buffer when they have the opportunity to remove the fencing.
Right. It's now not needed if you have a pool fence.
Right.
They may want it, but not in the buffer.
Understood.
And then just on the survey, again, one final point of clarification. You showed a 50-foot buff. It's called a 50-foot buffer, 50 feet wide. No additional disturbance proposed. That note is confusing because the actual buffer is a variable width buffer. It appears to be anyway. I would assume that it would need to be in order to meet the proposed standards of the, the 50-foot equivalent. So I would recommend an adjustment to that note. The 50-foot setback can stay, but that the survey should clearly note the proposed edge of the new buffer, which includes based upon your planting plan, that additional planting area that's noted as a green hatch. So again, it's a point of certification to make sure the record is consistent between the planting plan and the survey to make sure that you're not, you're not approving a 50-foot buffer. You're approving a variable width buffer because they can't comply with the 50-foot continuous buffer due to the existing improvements in the, in the buffer.
Right.
Which you're allowing to repeat. Follow that, Dan?
Uh, yes. Yep. I understand. Thank you.
So again, it's not changed the project whatsoever. It's just a point of clarification.
Changing the survey.
Yeah, before the, before the permit can be actually, I think, issued, we should make sure that these are clear on the plans so we can refer to the proper plans in the actual permit itself. You know, because right now these, these plans have a date and we like to refer those dates in the decisions so that when the board has a question in the future, they can always say, refer back to this original date.
Yes, I agree. Thanks.
And then, and then finally, again, to that point, Dan, just when you resubmit the plans, just make sure you add a date to the proposed planting plan because this plan that we got does not have a date on it.
Okay.
And then this is, this is just maybe more nitpicky than anything, but it's a little bit tricky to decipher what it is that we generally ask the applicant to do, which is give us a calculation of what the 50-foot continuous buffer would be
Right.
in a square foot in an area. What you do, I believe here, you say buffer zone five to one five. But one, I don't know if that's proposed or existing, so we should add, you know, proposed buffer zone. Two, it doesn't say buffer zone can, equivalent to the 50-foot continuous buffer requirement. We just generally ask that the applicants make that distinction so it's clear that the board again is approving a variable width buffer as equivalent to the 50-foot continuous buffer requirement.
Without the structures there.
Right. Yeah. Again, it's, it's just more of a clarification and a calculation.
Yes.
Again, it doesn't change anything with the project. We're good with the plantings. I feel as though the applicant has done a good job of addressing the board's comments with those changes. We should be able to move forward from this.
So we should table this until our next meeting. These drawings can be brought up to date and it would be a pretty straightforward approval at that point.
Do you want to have him draw the permit in the meantime so it can prove?
I'm sorry, before we get to that, the question is how do you want to handle the staircase?
Yeah, I think we need to address that in the permit process.
Do you want to make it a condition?
Yes, I do. Yeah.
And the same with the removal of PVC pipe?
It doesn't have to be removed, but you have to identify it and either bury it or sever it. Do, it's, if it's exposed conduit, it's really not a beautiful thing. Somebody needs to go out there and take a look at that and take ownership. And as we mentioned, you know the kind of decking, move the steps closer to the house, put the new decking on. The risers can remain exactly as they are. Landward, not the ones at the beach. There's a landing, so from the landing to the beach, you can shorten those steps so they're not 18 inches or whatever. They can be 12 and seven and you're good to go.
And the landing is over a buffer area? So that should be this through flow, is it?
Yeah.
Through flow as well, yeah. And the light, if you replace the light, I think we need like to be dark skies compliance.
I don't know that the harbor committee actually permits lights on, on the beach.
I don't think we do. And I, I was.
I think if you have the local waterfront revitalization, coastal consistency determination would probably need to be reconsidered if there were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lighting on, on the beach.
Yeah.
If it existed, it's probably maybe a, it's a fair question, that maybe outside of jurisdiction.
It's pre-existing, but.
But if it's being proposed or needing to be replaced.
Yeah.
Well, the last one, the most, the, the one closest to the water is non-functioning. So I would recommend that at least that one's just removed altogether. If the other ones were pre-existing when B. Smith had the house or whomever, there's not much we can do about that, I guess. I, I think Mary Anne's point is, is a good one, which is the dark sky thing. It's just really horrible to walk along that beach at nighttime and all of a sudden you get a glare bomb. Those are not glare bombs. They're down. But you hear what, here we go with this.
I understand. Yes.
Okay.
And again, to clarify, you mentioned a landing. You referring to the platform that's up by the cottage?
No, on the staircase here.
I just don't see the landing on the survey.
The drawing.
Is it the same width as the staircase?
Yes.
Okay.
So how are we addressing those issues then? As those, I mean, where, where are we noting that? Are those conditions of the permit or is that something that, I mean, you're going to need plans for that also or?
I don't think so. I, I mean, speaking personally, if you just do what we ask and incorporate that into permit, I don't think you need to redraw it. Nobody needs to show you how to put a, a tread or a riser in, but we were telling you what materials to use and we're telling you to start at the last landing towards the water.
No, I understand. Yeah, you want, I understand. Start at the seaward edge of the stairs, cut it back two feet. And then if we have to adjust the width of the rise and the run of the stairs, we can do that accordingly. But you want through-flow, open great decking.
That's great.
And didn't we have for consistency between the survey and the planting plan?
Yes. Yeah, Brent mentioned that. Yeah.
Yeah, they're going to need to submit.
But anyways, they'd have to submit it. Yeah.
Yeah, they're going to need to submit plans that are consistent.
Yeah.
Okay.
With all the information shown. Again, Dan, you don't need to make any changes to the actual planting specifications on the plans. It's just a matter of one, making sure that the landscape plan information matches the survey in terms of what's to be removed, what's remaining, verbiage. And then two, providing clarification on the calculation of the buffer and then making those updates to the survey to clearly demonstrate what's to be removed, what's to remain and showing the proposed edge of the buffer.
And to date the planting.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Yes.
All plans should be dated with the most recent.
Yes. Understood.
Okay, so right here.
Motion to table this?
Yes.
To adjourn this to April, what did we decide? Six? April, I make a motion to table this application until April 6th?
The 2nd.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We'll hold off on drafting the permit until he submits all the information. Or would you like to have a draft permit ready for? If.
I think we could have a draft permit. What do you think?
We would just need to have the updated materials before we draft the permit so we can refer to them in the permit.
Right.
That makes sense, Dan?
So Dan, if you can have it through us within like two weeks.
Yeah, because he needs to reference the dates and the titles of the plans and the permit.
Yeah.
Right. So the ball's in your court. You get them into us in two weeks and there'll be a permit here ready for us to consider. And if you need more time, then it'll go over another month.
Yes. Understood.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. We'll discuss the local laws.
Yep.
I think it's time for adjournments.
I think for adjournments always in order.
Right. Time for a cocktail.
This is one of 50 West Water Street, what we see.
Wow.
Hold them up to the.
Yeah, so. So the special meeting, you're going to have to pick a date. We'll do a notice. But on the agenda would be to discuss the one local law, the waterfront local law and these two two Marina applications, which would need to be approved. The permits are written, but we'd have to, you know, I'd put it in the notice that that was, is part of the meeting. I would like to do that very soon, so I'm going to send out a blast and we'll try to get some dates.
Why don't we try to do it now since we have us all here?
Okay.
Because otherwise it's like email hell.
So this was, so the 8 West Water Street and 50 West Water Street are tabled to be special meeting.
Yeah, right. So we're trying to figure out what the date would be that would work with all of us for the special meeting.
Friday, the 10th is as soon as I can do it.
I can do that. I can't between 10 and 11. I could do it at noon. I could do it at nine.
Can you do it at noon?
I can do it anytime on the.
Let's shoot for right now.
March 10th at noon?
Yes.
Yeah.
Lily might have worked, but.
Well.
But she's gone for three weeks.
Oh, she's wanting to be back. Okay.
I don't know, but.
A special meeting.
MPV.
We always need you.
Yeah. Yeah.
But you you.
Zoom in.
You could zoom, or you could have somebody zoom. Kathleen, Kathy said that she would like to attend the meeting.
She's she'll be with me more than likely.
So I don't know if that is a date or an hour that she can make it, but we could certainly zoom it.
Yeah, they could, if consultants can zoom.
Yeah.
Right, but you, you're saying that that date is problematic for you and Kathy, so are you involved in a meeting that you're not gonna be able to step aside and zoom to us?
We'll we'll be together, and and yes, I I would like to think that would probably take a, you know, a half hour or so, and.
We'll probably be okay, we never.
Let's let's let's.
So you will, you will be voting on permits that we will have drafted, not that there's much to them, you know, they're.
Right.
All replacements. But.
It's more about, I mean, Kathy talking about the local law, though.
Yeah.
I think that that's, they're gonna need that, and they're gonna need, the permits are written.
Yeah, I I Kathy's insights are really valuable in this, so if she could give. Fifteen, twenty minutes to an hour.
Could I, could I ask that, could I ask that you send the tenth to?
Yeah, tenth.
Tenth of meeting tonight with a backup date.
Okay.
Because like I said, I do know that we will be.
The backup will have, for me, will have to be the following week.
How about Monday, then, just as that that would be the.
Well, tenth is Friday, so the following week, we could do it on Monday.
Yeah.
Right, because we want to do it before the fourteenth, which is the D B R T meeting.
Information before the, by the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Now, I I'm planning to be out of town after after that, though. After the last two weeks of March.
Yeah, we're, I I know I'm good the next, the next Monday.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
I can't speak for Kathy, but I imagine.
Maybe we just research as a backup date.
Yeah.
Are you over here in the thirteen charts?
Don't believe I will.
Well, is this like an issue where he could zoom in? On John, on things like the local law?
Why?
He might be out of town.
To zoom, but for what reason?
I'm planning to be out, I'd be out of town, but.
No, the reason. Is it for a doctor's appointment or to go waterski?
I'd have to look at my calendar to see whether it is, but not for waterski.
I hate to have to ask you that.
Oh, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, how about I, how about I propose this, I think it's better to have as many of the board members available as possible. Kath, Kathy and I will do what we need to do to take twenty minutes or thirty minutes.
Yeah, we can get a question. They get fast, we can expedite.
Okay.
There's a chance that this meeting that we have set might fall through, too, so we might be actually be fully available.
Okay.
But as of right now, it's set, so we can't get out.
So I'm gonna draft an notice for the tenth at noon?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you gonna attend?
I think so, yeah.
And where is it, here?
Right here, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
The room's not being used for anything else, Doris, that day?
Yeah.
No police, no.
Is that a court or anything? We have to pay traffic tickets to get in.
Friday.
We, we, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think there's gonna be a big crowd for this one. I'll draft it up, I'll get it to you. Tomorrow or March Friday, or I'll fax it to you over the weekend. Yeah. And on on the website. It does not have to be published in the express, yeah, because it's just a meeting, it's not here.
What, is it, it's a work session?
No, it's a meeting.
Special meeting.
Special meeting. That's what I referred to as a special meeting. Because it's, because it's special. It couldn't be called a work session. You know, work sessions typically don't pass resolutions on, so, you know, under the open meetings law, a meeting is a meeting is a meeting, they're all meetings, so. But it, what it is really, it's a special meeting. Can somebody from planning join this? For the. For a meeting? Sure. To apply on, I'm just asking this openly because they have some strong opinion. Why not? Okay. I mean.
I don't want to be influenced by.
I mean, it's a public meeting, anybody can come. Yeah. You know, putting. No, I'm not saying I will do that. We have our own.
It's a big, yeah, we should really understand and figure out what.
Good point, good point.
So Fred. Think about the leaf blower law.
The what?
Leaf blower law.
Did we actually adjourn, I didn't know.
You don't hear a motion to.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Doris. Thank you.